I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of April 6, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Present.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. Thank you very much for being here. And before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to call for a moment of silence for the victims of the recent shootings in Boulder, Colorado, where 10 people died, Atlanta, Georgia, where eight people lost their lives and one person was injured, Washington DC, where an officer was killed and another seriously injured, and Orange, California, where four people lost their lives and two were seriously wounded. Our thoughts are with the families of the victims as they work through this terrible loss. We know what it's like in Santa Maria to have bad things happen, and our condolences and our deepest feelings go out to all these communities.
Madam Mayor, before we begin?
Yes.
I have an announcement.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I'd like to make an announcement that in order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 82973610889. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in Zoom, in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today's proclamation is in honor of National Library Week, whereas the theme of National Library Week, Welcome to Your Library, was selected as a result of the remarkable adjustments public libraries made to reimagine service during the pandemic. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Public Library is open for business during the current pandemic, offering sidewalk service, take-home program kits, grab-and-go service at branch locations, and phone and email service to the community. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Public Library's virtual library is open online 24/7 and provides a rich variety of services for children, teens, and adults, and access to eBooks, movies, music, games, virtual storytimes, interactive Zoom activities, and more from the comfort of home. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Public Library launched its Bookmobile during the pandemic, bringing safe and accessible library services outside the physical building. And whereas, when the community eventually returns to normal, the City of Santa Maria Public Library is ready to expand services and continue to meet the needs of the community through enhanced collections, thoughtful programs, and outreach services. And whereas librarians are trained professionals and help people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work, especially during difficult times. Now, therefore, the Mayor Alice Patino of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes April 4 through the 10, 2021, as National Library Week in the City of Santa Maria and encourages all residents to find their place at the library by visiting the library online, utilizing the sidewalk and grab-and-go services, and engaging in virtual programming as a means to explore the many services available during this unprecedented time.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. You know, when is the library going to be opened?
It's open.
It's open, but...
Yeah, so the library, sorry, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so the library was able to open this week. They started opening at the end of last week, and we've been back up and running this week. We do have germ guards mitigations. Some people, there aren't seats, so people can come in and get what they want and pick up their items and check out the library, or have a 20-minute limit and aren't able to stay there at this point until we get back into the orange tier. But it is open and running.
Okay, it is open, but not as it was pre-COVID, and so it's a 20-minute period?
Right.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Our next order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proclamation for Community Development Week, City of Santa Maria, whereas the week of April 5 to 9, 2021, has been designed as National Community Development Week to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Home Program. And whereas, since 1974, the CDGB program has provided annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide affordable housing and suitable living environment and basic human services. And whereas, since 1990, the Home Program has created and preserved affordable housing for low-income families. And whereas, the CDBG attracts investment in underserved communities, every dollar of CDBG funding leveraged another $4.09. And whereas, Home attracts investment in underserved communities, every $1 of Home funding leveraged another $4.52 of dollars. And whereas, over the past five years, the City of Santa Maria has invested more than $7.5 million in CDBG funds and more than $1 million in Home Funds into the community. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of Santa Maria, do hereby designate the week of April 5 to 9, 2021, as National Community Development Week in the City of Santa Maria to celebrate and showcase the programs and projects which are funded by federal programs like Community Development Block Grants and Home Investment Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobedo. Next, we have another proclamation. I will be making the presentation, and this is for Fair Housing Month. Whereas, the City of Santa Maria recognizes that the United States Congress enacted Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which was amended by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 as the Directive for Fair Housing. And whereas, fair housing laws outlined by said acts guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunities for all residents of the United States regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status. And whereas, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development declares the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. And whereas, the City of Santa Maria contracts with the Legal Aid Foundation of the Santa Barbara County to perform random testing of fair housing practices of landlords and property managers, reviews local newspapers for evidence of housing discrimination, assists in resolving discrimination disputes through litigation or referrals, makes presentations to Santa Maria Adult Education classes regarding rights of single parents and ethnic minorities to equal housing opportunities, and conducts community workshops to educate landlords and property managers regarding fair housing. Now, therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourage the continued celebration of equal housing opportunities and the progress made in opening the doors to housing opportunities for all residents of Santa Maria. Witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to the sixth day of April 2021, and this will be mailed to the Legal Aid Foundation, which does such a great job in our city in helping housing and any time that we have housing discrimination. So, Ms. Rojo, did you wish to say a few words, to comment on the Development Fair Housing Proclamation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much. On behalf of Legal Aid Foundation, Legal Aid continues to work hard to make sure fair housing is implemented and sustained in the community. And also, thank you so much for CD Week Proclamation. I left a copy of our CD Week newsletter on your desk. I've also mailed it out. We mailed it out to over 500 people, and it's also going to be posted on our Special Projects website.
Great.
But it showcases just some of the many agencies that have received CDBG and Home Funding and all the wonderful things they're doing in our community, thanks to the allocations you provide every year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rojo. The next Councilmember, Waterfield, will present the next proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation has to deal with child abuse in our community and in our surrounding area. Whereas, child abuse and neglect are a community condition and problem, and finding solutions depend on involvement among people in the community. And whereas, the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas, North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center and its CA PC partners have been committed to educating this community on child abuse and neglect and are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of abuse in the northern county of Santa Barbara. These events will provide information and materials that support families to prevent child maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, youth organizations, religious organizations, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community and residents. And whereas, all residents should become more aware of the importance of prevention in the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2021 as National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Santa Maria and call upon all residents, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and medical facilities to increase their participation in the effort to prevent child abuse. And Madam Mayor, this proclamation will be mailed to the North County Rape Crisis and Child Abuse Protection Center.
Thank you. And I see we have the proclamation, and you are going to be making the next presentation on national sexual assault prevention awareness?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And both of these proclamations go hand in hand together, and it's just been at such a heightened degree with COVID and families being locked in. I think it's just so important that we, you know, take that extra step in concern in regards to this. Whereas, National Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an annual campaign to raise public awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on how to prevent sexual violence. And whereas, people of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual violence, which is widespread and impacts every person in the community. And whereas, rape and sexual violence of all kinds continue to occur at an alarming rate, with California having the most reported rapes in the United States, and with the Department of Justice stating that an American is sexually assaulted every 98 seconds in the United States. And whereas, emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanent, therefore, working together to educate the community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions is so important. And whereas, a coalition of organizations exists which directly confronts this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies, who are helping in the efforts to end sexual assault. And whereas, prevention is possible when everyone gets involved in increasing education, awareness, and community involvement, recognizing the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, and noting the challenges of the victims, survivors of sexual assault, and their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2021 as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourage all residents and businesses to participate in a month full of recognition and activities promoted by North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions in an effort to eliminate the sexual violence from the City of Santa Maria. And this proclamation will also be mailed to the North County Rape Crisis Center. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waterfield. And Allison Wales is on? Okay. And she represents the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and she is registered to comment on the proclamation. Ms. Wales, did you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patino, and Councilwoman Cordero. First of all, I'd like to recognize you for attending yesterday at our pinwheel event in Santa Maria. It was a wonderfully attended event, and in fact, all of our pinwheels for child abuse awareness with our CAPC partners, Child Abuse Prevention Council, was so well-attended. After last year, when we couldn't do any, we were so excited to have people attend. And we planted almost 1,000 pinwheels across the north county from Solving to Guadalupe. Pinwheels represent one in five children that the CWS has actually had enough evidence to have an investigation upon. And the reality of this is that child abuse is still very hidden in our community. And even though the pinwheels are up for a short time, it helps us remember that they are there, and there are nonprofits and government agencies working and striving every day to advocate and counsel these young victims to help change their lives. Even though we'll pick them up in a few weeks, we will continue that fight. Also, I'd like to take a few words to say thank you for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation as well. We are still very virtual as far as a lot of our outreach. I encourage everyone on the council and those who are listening to tune into our Facebook and social media accounts. There's a lot of videos and art displays and even our candlelight vigil will be held virtual this year. However, I would like to say that we have not stopped in our advocacy, our counseling, in our outreach, even to our schools throughout the entire year, but we are anxious and ready for this summer to be here, so we are more face-to-face. And I also want to take this chance real quick to say thank you to the CDBG Advisory Committee for their recommendations for the 2021-2022 funding year, for the entire council for recognizing those recommendations. We appreciate all of you so much, and I can't wait to be there and see you in person soon. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wales. Now, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I make this presentation, I just want to mention the last two presentations that Councilwoman Waterfield read are particularly important to me. I was on the Rape Crisis Board for well over 25 years, 26 years, I think, and my wife took my place when I was elected to the council in 2008. And so, we were associated with the North County Rape Crisis for well over 30 years, and I watched them grow from basically a garage to where they now own their own building over there in Long Poak and have a satellite office here in Santa Maria. They do a tremendous job. It was a big part of that part of my career in working with them and being involved with writing the policy on how we were going to modernize that Santa Maria Police Department and work with sexual assault victims. And they certainly deserve everything that they're getting. I just want to mention that it's much more important than just a reading of a piece of paper. And I think Ms. Waterfield and yourself and this, Wales, is it? She...
Yes.
They all gave that very example. My proclamation here is dealing with the, I forgot here, Donation of Life Month. Whereas, organ tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts, recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. More than 108,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on the average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to shortage of donated organs. And whereas, the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas, a single individual's donation of a heart, lung, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal, the pancreas and a small intestine can save up to eight more lives. And donation tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas, millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organ, tissues, marrow, blood. And the spirit of giving and the decision to donate are not restricted by age, medical condition, and California residents interested in saving the lives through giving a living of kidneys and donations are encouraged to visit the world wide web, livendonationcalifornia.org for more information. And whereas, the Santa Maria residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for and renewing their driver's license or ID card at the Department of Motor Vehicles. There's a little yellow or a little pink dot that they put on your driver's license. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, recognizes April 21 as National Donate Life Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourages everyone to check yes when applying for the renewal of their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at the donatelifeCalifornia.org or donatevitaCalifornia.org, signed by our Mayor Alice Patino. And this will be mailed to Scott Burns with Donate Life Registry. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I was just checking to make sure on my, and I noticed, Ms. Soto's also checking to make sure that we had that little pink dot on our driver's license. So, it's just to remind everyone, you can do that. And I guess Mr. Burns is registered to speak? Mr. Burns, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As I said, my name is Scott Burns. Memorial Day weekend 2015, I'm on a friend's sailboat, Santa Cruz Island, and the Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol comes up behind me and says, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." They didn't realize, well, most people didn't realize I had kidney failure. I got on their boat, came back to Santa Barbara, and drove down to Cedar Sinai. The following morning at 11:30 in the morning, I had a fully functioning kidney. As Councilmember Cordero mentioned, about 107 people nationwide are on the kidney list and organ donation list, which is about the size of the City of Santa Maria, so it's a lot of people. But my donation is only part of the story. Vivian Butel, a nurse at Cottage Hospital, died suddenly, and she died in a way that her organs could be donated. I never got to meet Vivian, but I got to meet her mom, her sisters, her nieces and nephews, and now I volunteer with them at Organ Donation Month and Rose Bowl float. So, I do appreciate all the help that the City of Santa Maria gives in promoting organ donations. Yes, the pink dot is an important thing. We all need to have one on our driver's license. The issue that we always seem to have is, while 90% of the people in California feel they need to promote organ donations, only 43% are on the waiting list, have a pink dot. So, we need to work on that. And one other thing with the pandemic, we found that if you actually recover from COVID-19, you are still able to donate your organs, and we always need people that would donate their organs. I thank you very much for your support of Organ Donation Month, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burns. The next item on the agenda is the Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the Criteria for Public Comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. As a reminder, if you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand using the Raise Hand button in Zoom, or if you are participating by phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. Do we have any written comments or requests to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council staff has received 16 written communications and a signature petition containing 563 signatures objecting to Consent Calendar Item 3(c), the second reading of the ordinance regulating mobile car washes. Each generally communicated the ordinance would be too much of a financial burden on mobile car wash owners and put many people out of work. These communications were emailed to the City Council and have been posted on the website agenda for tonight's meeting for public viewing. We received an anonymous written comment in support of the ordinance as well as a phone call in support of the ordinance. And Madam Mayor, it looks like we have a number of hands raised in our Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you. I understand we have a request for an interpreter for this item. So, why don't we take, Ms. Rojo is going to assist in the interpretation for public comment, so if we can accept that individual for the public comment first?
Okay, yes. And I believe Ms. Rojo has an announcement before I let the gentleman on.
Okay, Ms. Rojo?
The announcement will be that if they choose for me to translate, that I ask that they stop every five to 10 seconds so I can translate what they've said so far. That way I can ensure that I am capturing everything they want to say. Señor, si gusta que yo traduzca su comentario, por favor, para cada cinco a diez segundos para que pueda traducir lo que ha dicho, así puedo yo captar lo que está tratando de decirle al consiglio. Gracias.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the individual who requested an interpreter was Renee Asova. I have asked, I have to unmute.
Okay, so we use three minutes, but when we have the interpreter, it will make it six minutes.
Renee, puede oprimir el botón que dice unmute?
There we go.
Gracias.
Good morning, Council. My name is Renee Asova. I'm the owner of Asova Mobile Carla. We respectfully ask you to please let us work. By approving this law, we are accepting food and shelter for many children. We want the best for our children because they are hard and dangerous. With this job, we are setting a good example for our children by making money in an honorable, honest way. We politely ask that let us continue working. With the money we make, we use it to keep us alive. For example, it pays our rent, food, and clothing. All we want is to give our children the best we can to take care of our ends.
It was translated for me. That's great. Sure, no problem. If you need, I'll be here.
Why don't you ask if there's anyone that needs an interpreter or translator?
Hay alguien que gusta decir algo en español que puedo traducir antes de que sigan con los comentarios en inglés? Si hay alguien que usted decir algo en español, por favor, suba la mano virtualmente en la pantalla de Zoom.
They don't have any way to respond unless I unmute them, so we won't know. They don't have any way to respond unless I unmute them, so we won't know until we reach our next speaker. But I did know of Mr. Asova who requested an interpreter.
Okay. So then we'll go on, and if there's someone that requests an interpreter, then, okay, thank you so much, Ms. Rojo.
Yeah, no problem.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. I had this great old timer up here working earlier, and now it is not. So I will be back to our traditional timer down here.
Okay.
So I apologize about that.
Well, we'll make it work. Thank you.
We have Miguel Delgado, who has their hand up.
Okay.
Mr. Delgado, are you available to speak? Go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay, we will move on. We have John, oh, here he comes, Mr. Delgado.
Yes. Thank you for letting me speak. On behalf of my colleagues, I am against the ordinance 421. With all due respect, I'd like you to think that all we want to do is work. We want to work for our families and our kids and show them a good example. These other, this ordinance will leave us no choice but to seek assistance from the government. We are just getting out of the pandemic, and what the City Council wants to do is I think you should focus on crime and robbery, and what we're doing right now is not doing anybody any harm. Can someone tell me where the ranchers and farmers throw away their contamination? I can't sleep, and I haven't been able to eat, and this is just really affecting us greatly. Thank you so much. That's all for now.
We have another hand up by Mr. John McKinnon.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, good evening. My name is John McKinnon, and I'm a Santa Maria Valley resident and attorney with the County of Santa Barbara. And I'm also a driver of a 2020 electric Honda Kona. I wanted to speak on the proposed Tesla Supercharger Agreement before the council, as well as on the need for growth of public electric vehicle charging stations in the City of Santa Maria. According to the Department of Energy, 80% of electric vehicles are charged at home. However, EV owners who live in apartments or multi-unit dwellings need an affordable public charger for their vehicle. The proposed 12 Level 2 chargers with free electricity will certainly help. However, the need for public EV charging stations continues to grow, and unfortunately, Santa Maria is behind the curve at this point compared to other local cities. Electrify America just erected fencing near the Target store for future installation of the first modern DC fast charger, commonly called the Level 3 charger, in the city. Meanwhile, San Luis Obispo, Paso Robles, Bismopit, Buelted, and Solvang already have DCFCs installed. These chargers allow EV to charge from 0 to 80% in just 30 to 60 minutes. I'm sure the city is aware of the upcoming funding from the state, CAL EVIP program, which is anticipated to start this July. Several million dollars for Santa Barbara County will be available for businesses, government, and nonprofits to install EV chargers for public use. Public locations within the city could also include the city library parking structure, a lawn bowling area, and EV station could be placed in the police department's public parking lot on West Bedaravia, thus providing a safe charging location for residents in that area of the city. Kilowatt fees can be set in order to cover the cost of electricity and maintenance, and some of the city employees could be given a discount or a set amount of free charging as a work incentive. This is similar to the chargers that are available to teachers at Allen Hancock College. Two pillars, each with two connectors, could be entitled up to about $20,000 in credit. I would strongly encourage the city to begin looking at the CAL EVIP program as funding will be first come, first served. Partly, the city is in need of direct current chargers, or Level 3 chargers. Tesla Supercharger can be used by Tesla. It cannot be used by any other EV manufacturer such as Chevy, Ford, GMC, Toyota, Honda, or others. As I mentioned before, a DCFC can charge an electric vehicle from 0 to 80% in about 30 to 60 minutes, depending on the vehicle and kilowatt. A Highway 101 exit of Veteran Listole and Main Street are ideal locations for DCFCs for both residents and highway travelers' use. Again, I would encourage the city to look at the CAL EVIP funding and now look at potential locations to the city council to apply for funds when applications can be turned in. Again, the funding is first come, first served, and those cities and counties that wait may be left with nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Next speaker we have is Mr. David Bixby.
I'm here tonight to represent the Advisory Board for the Salvation Army, and what I'd like to do is just congratulate all of our partners in caring for people. We've done a lot during this COVID season. Our particular organization is reaching out to about 300 to 400 people every week with the, perhaps the poorest residents of Santa Maria being served by the Salvation Army. Some of the things that we are doing presently include reaching out to families that actually have been impacted by COVID-19 and servicing their needs. We attempt to reach people to help them with partial housing when they need housing assistance. And as a result of all this, you know, we are in need of help, but because of a transition that occurred earlier last year, we were unable to make a grant application. However, we support all the other people in the community that have been providing services to the community as we do, and we want you to know that we continue to do that. One of the organizations that has been such a benefit to us in being able to provide food is, of course, the County Food Bank. We really appreciate the help and assistance that we receive from them in order to be able to provide for the members of the community that we serve. And I want to thank the City Council. I want to thank the City Police Department for all the help that we have received over the last year in making our environment as safe and as supported as possible by the City of Santa Maria, and we just say thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, our next speaker we have on the list is Robin Palmerston. Robin Palmerston, will you unmute? There you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members. My name is Robin Palmerston. I'm the Director of the Children's House Montessori School, which has been a proud member of the Santa Maria Valley community for the past 39 years, serving children ages 2 to 12. The COVID-19 pandemic spotlighted the critical need for early care and education professionals and their programs to serve our community. Those professionals who were able to either remain open or were able to reopen during the pandemic did so with elevated safety protocols, heightened regulations, and increased costs, and often at risk to themselves and their own families. Nonetheless, these essential workers, the early care and education professionals, have provided safe spaces for children, learning opportunities, and needed social and emotional support. The interconnectedness of early care and education with our city's businesses, the city's operations, families, and schools is being brought into greater focus. In 1971, the National Association for the Education of Young Children established April as a time to celebrate and recognize the critical role of early care and education professionals and quality programs. So this is the 50th anniversary of Month of the Young Child. It's fitting to recognize and celebrate early care and education professionals in our city, their dedication to children and their families, and to recognize how essential they are to the vitality of our city. Perhaps the council would consider making a public statement to that effect during this month. Now is a time to commit how we, as citizens of a community, will better meet the needs of all young children and their families, and to honor the often overlooked early care and education professionals who meet the needs of our city's youngest citizens. Thank you.
The next speaker I show on our list, Alexa Martin, I believe wants to speak on the CDBG item. Can you just confirm that? And if so, we'll call on you when that item is up.
Yes, that was actually, I was going to ask that question. I will wait until we're at item four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next speaker I show here is Chris Barajas. Chris, there you go. Chris, go ahead and unmute.
Hello, can I?
Yes, we can.
My name is Chris Barajas. These are trying times in the midst of once in a century pandemic. We have dealt with all kinds of shortages. We have had to quarantine ourselves. We have had to social distance. We have seen colleges and schools shut down. We have seen prisons and jails release inmates early to avoid spreading illness. We have seen business after business close, many temporarily and some permanently. Unemployment remains high for the foreseeable future, and colleges have seen a significant drop in enrollment. The future looks bleak for our young adults just beginning their adult lives. I'm here to speak on behalf of the many, many hardworking men and women who exemplify the true entrepreneurial spirit, seeking a better change and to lift themselves out of poverty or to improve their financial situation that can no longer provide for the basic necessities of human sustainment. These innovative small business owners have found an inexpensive opportunity that can really make a difference towards that goal for them and their families by improving on and providing the service that is essential now more than ever when you consider the residents who are at greater risk of severe illness from COVID-19 and would gain from a mobile detail service that can actually sanitize and limit exposure to the vehicle. Mobile washing detailing is that business, and these dreamers are Santa Maria residents. Some were born and raised here, some are trying to assimilate in a country that doesn't want them except to do menial labor. It shouldn't matter that some are immigrants from another country or that some don't speak English. They make up the fabric of Santa Maria and provide essential labor and services to this community. And if they want to use their brains or their backs to defend themselves, then they should be allowed to do so. Let's embrace that quality, not stomp it out. I want to let the council and the public to know that the true number of part-time and full-time mobile washing detailers is 180, with half of those using at least one helper, for a total of 270 families involved in this service, and I know each and every one of them personally. Not the 80 that the city manager believes based on the number of business licenses issued, and that based on the 2010 census, each Santa Maria household consists of 3.77 family members, for a total of 1,018 Santa Maria residents that depend wholly or in part on this income. This work provides millions of dollars annually, money that is spread out among many, many families, money that is spent in this valley of ours. It provides home and rent money, car purchases from local dealers, equipment from local suppliers, food from local grocery stores, clothes from local department stores, dinners from local restaurants, and so much more. The best thing about it is that none of this money comes from the city or any other type of government program. On the contrary, all this merchandise is taxed, and that actually puts money into the city coffers. It also provides an outlet for the young children of these business owners. Instead of wasting the day away staring at their phones, playing video games, or doing worse things in the streets, they are actually learning life skills, positive work ethics, and reaping the rewards of their labor and lessening the reliance on their parents for their own personal wants and needs. I put my two sons to work beginning at age 12, and the oldest went into the army for eight years, did two tours in Iraq and one in Afghanistan. He now has painful employment, yet he still details on the side because he learned a trade that he is good at and enjoys. My other son is attending handouts.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. Your three minutes are up at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, it looks like Mr. Brian Hollander, but I believe he's registered to speak also on a CDBG item, but if you are wanting to speak during this item as Okay, I'll move on. The next speaker, Kent Bullard. Mr. Bullard?
Yes.
You wish to speak during public comment?
Say again?
You wish to speak during public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kent Bullard. I'm a resident of Ventura. I'm speaking tonight in my role as the Transportation Chair of the Los Padres Chapter of the Sierra Club. Santa Barbara County is making great strides toward adoption of electric vehicles by both the public and municipal entities. Santa Maria is positioned in North County in Assembly Bill Area 1550, Senate Bill 535, designated low-income and disadvantaged zones. There are only a few opportunities for residents and travelers to charge electric vehicles within the city. It is excellent that Electrify America has broken ground to build an EV charger near the Target on Bedavera, and now there is the further opportunity to install a Tesla Supercharger at Town Center. This installation has many benefits, to include bringing travelers to Town Center, to provide residents with 12 freely-used public Level 2 chargers, and further, to pay annual rent to the city. My only two requests are that the lease arrangement is approved and that the city post and enforce California Vehicle Code 22511 to prevent blocking of the charging facilities by vehicles not actively charging. Thank you, and I appreciate all the work you're doing to make this happen. It's a great thing. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker in line is Sean Kellythorne. However, I also think you've registered for a CDBG item. Did you wish to speak on? Did you wish to speak on public comment? Sean? Kellythorne? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and lower your hand then. If you, um, don't wish to speak on public comment and you are going to speak on, uh, the CDBG item, you would raise your hand later.
Right, okay, I'll do that. This is new for me.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three remaining speakers. Manuel Estrada?
You hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Manuel Estrada, and my company is Estrada Auto Detailing. Been since two thousand and ten. My equipment includes, uh, five hundred gallons per tank because I wash up commercial trucks, and I use about a hundred gallons for per truck. He make, he made me work easier and save me time to going to buy a Pro-Cis water. And I have account with national companies. They came and leave the money here in Santa Maria. That helps the local economy. We are essential workers because we wash the inside of the trailers so they, they can load food. For example, Coopers are some, uh, local companies that require my service to do the wash-up because they love food. One of my customers loves food items for the USDA, which is part of the government, food for schools, and those trailers and containers are inspected by USDA inspector. If the trailer don't, doesn't pass the trailer inspection, they require my service to wash it. Wash it up and sanitize the trailer when they inspect the trailer again to be able to load it. If my company doesn't complete with the new regulation that city wants to impose the money that companies bring to Santa Maria, we have to go to Salinas or Los Angeles, which is the closest truck wash. We, we're taking about local and national companies. As you know, Santa Maria is a surrounding agricultural area where national and international products are distributed. A mobile car wash is not only basing in washing cars. It's also bases in washing commercial trucks and containers that are being shipped on train or boat. I understand that you are concerned by soap and water entering the sewers, but there are, are many of us who has followed the regulations on the Santa Maria Car Wash Mobile Guide brochure. We collect the water in disposal in green areas. The new proposition wants to provide us from working on the pu- public streets of Santa Maria. We are putting our costs and measurements. Also, we are paying our taxes on the city's Santa Maria or business license. And thank you for listening to me, and we hope you understand that we are worried and we are going out of our business and can, can provide our families in the middle of this pandemic where millions of the people were out of the jobs. That's it.
Thank you. The next speaker we have, and followed by our final, will be Miguel, followed by Mark Holtman, and that would be our last speaker after Mr. Holtman. Miguel, are you available to speak now?
Uh, buenas tardes.
Good.
Si, escucha?
Si, si lo escuchamos.
Um, mi nombre es Miguel Angel Peña.
My name is Miguel Angel.
Uh, queridos miembros del council, uh, yo soy el dueño de el, de un car wash.
Dear City Council, I am an owner of a car wash.
Uh, lo único que nosotros pedimos que pues, no dejen trabajar, ¿verdad?
The only thing we're asking is that you let us work.
Para así enseñarles, por ejemplo, yo tengo cinco hijos. Entonces uno de ellos es el que me ayuda a hacer el trabajo. Entonces yo le estoy enseñando una actividad, trabajar honradamente, y más que nada mantenerlo fuera de las calles.
I have five children, and all that we ask is that you let us show our five kids, especially one that works with me, uh, that, how to do honest, hard work.
Uh, nosotros, yo, especialmente yo y mis colegas, no tenemos nada con ustedes. Este, nomás pedimos que pues, las regulaciones que ustedes nos quieren poner sean un poco menos estrictas.
Me and my colleagues don't have anything against the city council. We just ask that your rules aren't as strict.
Y pues espero que lleguemos a un punto medio en que podamos nosotros también cumplir las regulaciones que ustedes nos puedan poner, algo, poner una, una balanza todo para que sea algo, en un punto medio.
And I hope we can come to a common ground so that we can also abide by the rules, and I hope that we can both just come to an agreement.
Porque con, con eso de la, de la pandemia pues sí nos, yo perdí mi trabajo y pues tuve que dedicar a hacer, a car wash. Entonces de ahí estoy proveendo para toda mi familia, para todas mis necesidades que...
I lost, I lost my job because of the pandemic, and so I started doing the mobile car wash, and this is what I use to generate income. It's what I depend on.
Eso es todo de mi parte, y espero que sea algo una respuesta positiva de parte de ustedes. Buenas tardes.
That's all, I hope, a positive response from you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. The final speaker in the public comment is Mark Holtman. Are you available?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, uh, council members. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Mark Holtman. He is my husband. Um, he has been detailing since nineteen ninety-four. He owns MMK Auto Detailing. I've always been careful with the chemicals I use while detailing. Detailing is how I support my family. If this ordinance passes with all the fees and fines that are being proposed, I will not be able to continue detailing, which is what I love doing. Because I set my own hours, I am able to be there for my family. I am a mobile detailer. I have never, nor will I ever, become stationary. I do believe there could be some guidelines to follow, but not what has been proposed. We provide a service that big car washes do not provide. We come to you. We clean and sanitize the inside of your vehicle. Please let us help come up with something that will be beneficial to all parties involved. This ordinance, as it is written, will prohibit, prohibitively challenge anyone wanting to enter into this business and will eliminate the ninety helpers and the ninety part-timers and half of the full-timers in the first week of enforcement. The forty-five or so that are left will thin out in the first year due to violations and permanent suspensions by process of elimination. Many will just quit and be forced to find full-time work elsewhere. I predict that two hundred and thirty families will lose this prized income. I also think that these families will struggle to find a way to replace that income. I hope that the city will be ready and willing to help them with evictions, utilities, payments, job placement, food donations, et cetera. And with serious crimes up in Santa Barbara County, eighteen percent from twenty nineteen, is the city really going to risk adding to those figures? Now is not the time to prohibit, limit, restrict, and deprive these workers of their freedom and pursuit of financial stability. I urge the council members to take all of this into consideration before casting their vote on such an important topic that will have long lasting consequences for many of your residents. I want the council to know that we are conscious of the extent of our concerns and that we are willing to work with the city manager to revise the current ordinance. I feel that we can address the city's envi- the city's environmental concerns as well as convert the few mobile washers that choose to be stationary to once again be mobile. As a goodwill gesture, we agree to stop working on Moon Street to show our willingness to compromise. We do not dispute that mobile is mobile, and by working together, we can come up with a reasonable method of enforcement that ensures that all streets of Santa Maria are free of stationary wa- washers. I have said that some regulations, okay, just don't overregulate us out of our business. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. That's it? Okay, that's fine. Sure. Okay, so our final, um, public comment speaker will be Jaime Garduno.
¿Escucha?
Just, yes.
Si, si lo escuchamos.
Okay. Bueno, mi nombre es Jaime Garduno.
Hola, mi nombre es Jaime Gardu- my name is Jaime Garduno.
Yo, yo soy, este, yo hago un part-time pa- del car wash. Tengo un trabajo en otro lado.
I do, I do mobile car wash part-time. I have a, I have another job.
Porque ahorita con la pandemia pues la verdad no, nos recortaron las horas y no, no, no alcanza el dinero. Tenemos que ayudar a nuestros padres y luego para...
Okay. Oh, sorry. Right now with the pandemic, uh, we had to get, we got our hours reduced, and we had to get another job. We have to help our parents.
Entonces, uh, yo lo que quiero pues es que nos dejen, que nos dejen trabajar. Yo sé que hay regulaciones que quieren meter.
What I would like is for you to let us work. I know that you have to implement recommendation, uh, regulations.
Pero pues estamos dispuestos a acatarlas, las regulaciones que ustedes quieran, pero que sea algo justo porque de este trabajo dependen pues nuestras familias, nuestros hijos.
We, we don't mind following the rules. They just have to be just because we depend on this for our families.
Entonces, aparte de eso pues nosotros enseñamos a nuestros hijos cómo se trabaja, cómo se vive en este país haciendo cosas, uh, bien sin, sin robar, sin hacer cosas mal.
We're also trying to show our kids how to earn a living and without doing anything wrong, without doing anything illegal.
Entonces, yo lo que les pido, los señores, cónsules, que digan todo, todas las autoridades que nos dejen trabajar, uh, porque contribuimos también para la ciudad y para todo.
I'm asking the city council to let us work. We contribute to the city.
Sería todo de mi parte y les agradezco por escucharnos.
This is all, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Thank you. Uh, before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any com-? Do you wish to make any comments?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So regarding the Tesla charging station, a couple of comments made by comment, by the public commenters were, um, assuring that the spaces aren't blocked and that we actually enforce the penal, or the, um, traffic code related to that. And, um, we do have that in the, as, in the agreement for council's consideration. Does include a clause that, uh, if Tesla notifies us that the spaces are blocked, that we'll, uh, enforce that. In addition, it is a public area, and our rangers do patrol it on a regular basis as public property, and they'll be looking out for that issue as well. Uh, regarding the mobile car wash comments, I'd ask, um, City Attorney Tom Watson to respond.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, thank you. Um, I absolutely agree with many of the comments. We want our local entrepreneurs to work. We are very supportive of our small business people, and we recognize that while the state is pushing us in a direction, both for drought and water purposes and also for wastewater purposes, which makes such regulation necessary, that we will be very fair and consistent in attempting to keep the businesses intact and working. The, the unfortunate part is a great deal of misinformation that has been provided, uh, to our local community and particularly to our car washing vendors. Uh, the city, uh, Code Enforcement Division has no intention of running anyone out of business. As a matter of fact, we want to encourage, uh, more businesses, but we want to encourage smart businesses. So by way of a, what we call a soft rollout, the Code Enforcement Supervisor, as well as one of our Spanish-speaking officers, we will, uh, arrange a workshop to meet with the car washers to get them to understand what's in the ordinance and so that they can comply. Because what we want is compliance and not enforcement and citations. That has never been the Santa Maria way. It hasn't been the way through COVID, and it hasn't been the way under my administration. I will continue that. Couple of specific items I wanted to make mention of is that, um, we will be endeavoring to see those portions of the ordinance that are difficult for small business people to manage, and we will be bringing back in the fall, A, uh, modifications as necessary. Secondly, we are proposing no fees at this time uh, because we don't want to financially impact these folks. What we want to do is get them licensed and under compliance, so we have a, a good handle. Clearly, uh, Mr. Barajas knows of more unlicensed and, and people who don't have business licenses. We want everyone to be in compliance. Thirdly, as, uh, the, the individual, uh, uh, Miss, Miss, um, uh, Holtman stated, we want people to be mobile. One of our difficulties has been the neighborhood complaints of stationary, long, long, uh, lines, loud music, and lots of, of material in the, in the drains and gutters. Those are what we are going to be specifically looking at and trying to reduce, because we want to reduce the neighborhood congestion and the neighborhood issues. What we are going to try and figure out is how to work best for us as, as regulators and work best for the small business people to make a good livelihood. That's our, that, that is, is my pledge to you. We will bring you back a report on the effectiveness of the ordinance or any changes, uh, probably by the end of late summer or early fall. But in between now and then, we are proposing no fees specifically. And with respect to the dump elements, which we did hear that there were some concerns about how long it takes to go and dump their wastewater. Uh, again, any lawful wastewater dump is allowable. It doesn't have to go to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we will talk with folks about that and, and, and what options there are, just as long as it doesn't go down the storm drains or down the sewers. That's been, that's the impact that the state has on us. So we will bring back a report, but I just want to reassure the community that our intent is actually to keep folks working, keep cars clean. Uh, it's better for, for both, uh, the environment and for us, but we do need to recognize the impact of state regulations and get our, uh, community into compliance.
Well, I know the state has been looking at us, and every now and then, um, we've had people sue us because of, that they don't think we're complying with regulations, and then when they find out that we actually are, which is in our favor. You know, I should have had Ms. Rojo, um, do the translation on that. So can you remember enough of what Mr.? Okay. Okay, can you?
I'm good, I'm not that good.
Okay.
Yeah, I talk a lot, I follow you.
Okay. Let's, let's try to do a translation because there are people out there that are, were not understanding this. So I'm going to ask you to...
I'll, I'll hit the high points.
Hit the high points? And that, and that we are going to be doing workshops to inform people.
Yes, again, I, this is the City Attorney, Tom Swatson, who also is the Chief Code Enforcement Officer.
El abogado de la ciudad va a dar unos detalles acerca de qué es lo que va a pasar si la, la, la regulación es adoptada.
I want to assure the community that our intent is to keep people in business and employed.
El abogado dice que quiere asegurar que el intento es de mantener a todos empleados, es nomás de, de seguir las reglas, uh, del, del estado.
My team will be advertising an educational workshop for people to be educated about the needs that they have under the new ordinance.
Habrán talleres para educar a la comunidad acerca de lo que es necesario para seguir las reglas.
And that will be in English and Spanish.
Y va a ser en español y en inglés.
We want to encourage small business people to continue to operate in the city of Santa Maria.
Queremos apoyar a que continúen a, a seguir, uh, los negocios aquí en la, en la ciudad de Santa María.
We will not be, um, seeking to have fees for the, um, uh, ordinance until probably fall.
En el momento no, no habrá infracciones. Eso a lo mejor hablarán más acerca de eso en el otoño.
Our intent is to get car washers back to being mobile.
El intento es de hacerlos, los que están ofreciendo car wash más móviles.
And we will work with the car wash community to see if there are any difficult parts of the ordinance that should be changed.
Y, eh, la ciudad trabajará con los que están ofreciendo car wash, móviles, para tratar de, de arreglar cualquier, uh, irregularción que, que, que esté, um, que, que esté afectando la... que esté afectando la regulación que está implementada en la ciudad.
If there's a difficulty with getting water to the wastewater treatment plant, the water can be deposited in any lawful dumping station.
Si hay problemas en donde llevar el agua, puede llevarlo a cualquier lugar donde se pueda tirar uno el agua.
We want to encourage our local community to be prosperous and we continue to be a business-friendly town for our small businesses.
Queremos que prosperen los negocios y nosotros queremos apoyar a todos los que están tratando de sobrevivir con sus negocios.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Rojo. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Yeah, I, I think it's really important that the people know that there, there's been a lot of disinformation. It's just basically want people to have a business license. We want them to be in compliance when they discharge the water and we want them to be mobile. And that you will be doing informational groups, both in Spanish and English, to inform people. And if things need to be tweaked a little bit, then we'll, we'll fix them. Thank you. Any comments from council members? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Watson, for explaining that. I, I, I just want to say some things that are going to need to be translated as well. These, these regulations that the city of Santa Maria is putting into effect are, yes, they're written on the city stationary and they're city regulations, but they're in place to comply with the state demands. It's not just Santa Maria that is deciding, we're going to do this. This is being demanded by the state. Is that correct, Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure. El miembro del consilio, el señor Cordero, quiere que sepan todos los que están escuchando que estas regulaciones aunque son implementadas por la ciudad de Santa María, en realidad están viniendo del estado y el estado es el que está diciéndole a la ciudad de Santa María que necesitamos implementar estas reglas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make that emphasize.
Thank you, yes. And you know, I heard Mr. Estrada was concerned because he does commercial trucks, but he also does that on private property. So that does, that does not impact him, am I right?
Again, we'll be working with those issues as well.
Okay.
But again, we can't really dialogue this, but I did want to respond to the comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. Thank you, Ms. Rojo. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone wish to have items pulled for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 3C for a separate vote and discussion.
3C?
3C, did you say?
Yes, 3C. The second reading and adoption of ordinance 202102 regulating mobile car washing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I was going to ask, pull that same one.
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There's nothing else to be submitted. I would like to adopt the consent calendar with omitting item number 3C.
Okay. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And I have a second. So any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, 3C. Councilmember Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, I would like to start by asking some clarifying questions, if I may. The first question is regarding the bond deposits. If you can please explain that part of the ordinance as it was a bit unclear. I believe it read $20,000 for individuals seeking permits and $10,000 for charity permits. Can you please elaborate and explain that further to me?
And if you could go name that section so we can follow along?
Oh, goodness. It was towards the end.
Okay.
Page.
Insurance and securities?
No, securities.
Okay.
Yes.
Section 421.18, page nine. I've got page.
421. What?
18.
I can actually help answer that question. That sounds like a scary number, which I would have thought the exact same thing. So basically, when you do a bond like that or a surety, it's two and a half to 3% of the total. So you're looking at roughly $250 to $500 on that range, from the $10,000 to the $20,000. And you would get that back in the end. It basically is a surety bond that you would have with the city. So if there were any damages or anything like that that happened to city property while you were operating, it would basically be, provide a bond saying that you would pay for damages.
So it's like the construction bonds that we do, that we give them back in the end? Okay.
So it's, it's. And it's only two and a half to 3%. It is not.
Of the 20,000.
Of the 20,000. It is not the whole thing.
And how would you determine whether it's the two or the 3%?
That's just whatever the company that you went with to purchase the bond.
Got it. And then my other question is regarding liability insurance. I read that it would be required that they have a minimum general liability insurance in the amount of $1 million. Is that customary? Is that, is that just like?
That's, that's kind of standard for any business practice.
That is our standard amount. And technically, because they're mobile, it's, it would be a vehicle, it would be on their vehicle policy anyway. So they have a general policy attached to their vehicle policy because they have a vehicle running that stuff around.
Got it. And then my other question is regarding fees. I know that Mr. Watson was sure that there would be no fees, but in the ordinance, there's talk about a utility disposal facility permit fee.
I have so. I'm super excited. I have that answer too.
Thank you.
To discharge, if you have a wastewater discharge permit, it's 12 cents per gallon. So you don't have, there's not any restrictions. I know there were a lot of misconceptions in the beginning that after the first ordinance kind of went out or the first reading, that you are going to have to go with massive tanks and you would have, you, you can. But there's actually no requirement for size of tank or anything like that. All it is, is that it has to be discharged appropriately and collected appropriately to meet the state requirements. So if you take it out to the wastewater treatment plant, you do not have to go to Salinas for mobile car washes. But if you take it to the wastewater treatment plant, it's 12 cents per gallon. So if you had a 100-gallon tank, which is a pretty massive size, it's 12 bucks.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
And another question regarding that is the, 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 what, the, the treatment? That's not the treatment. The wastewater, thank you, the wastewater plant. I've been hearing concerns from folks about the long wait times due to the folks who own like portable sanitation companies. And so I guess my question, I don't know if this would be to you or if Mr. Springer is on the line on what the, whether or not we, we have, not that we don't have capacity, but what will that, what will the impact of having over 100 mobile car? I'm just throwing it out. If we have like 100 mobile car washes now needing to go to the wastewater treatment plant, how will that impact staffing and just impact?
Actually, Councilmember Soto, through the mayor, that's, so that, we're actually better prepared for that than we have been in the past. A couple of years ago, we had a council-approved capital project in order to redo the dump area there, the RV, the water, the wastewater dump area. And so we do have an automated process, so it doesn't require the staff anymore to run back and forth. The people who go there regularly can get a card and be able to just go in and swipe the card and it unlocks the facility for them to be able to use it. So it's a lot easier and a lot more capacity now than we had even a couple of years ago.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's so fancy. My, my, my other question is regarding, is, is about how we would measure the water usage. And I don't know if that's based off tanks. I know that in the ordinance, I'd read that folk, if, if folks would be getting a permit for water, with, with water, for like washing with water and not waterless, that they would need to contain 95% of the water usage and with like a 5% of, of like over, not overflow. Is that overflow?
Vaporation, probably.
How would you measure that?
Yeah. Again, that goes back to our reasonability on enforcement. Because one of the reasons that we, that we have such detail in this is because we were having so many in a stationary area that we were seeing it go into those drains. Again, in a, in a mobile scenario, we're not going to be following them around and identifying this. We're relying to a great extent on the operators acting appropriately. So we putting in those standards because that's the standards we receive. But, but we're going to be, again, trying to work with the operators to, to have it be reasonable. The biggest thing is the concentration. When you have a non-mobile scenario, you have a great level of concentration. When they're dispersed into the community, that impact is less and we're not going to be going around doing drop-by-drop analysis.
Got it. And then my last question has to do with, again, capacity. In the ordinance, it talks about folks who risk, who, mobile car wash owners needing to submit reports where they record keep the, the number of washes that they do per month and that they need to submit it on the 25th. Who would that be submitted to and, and what would be the purpose of that?
I can explain the second perp, the, the purpose really is, again, if we saw a mobile operator in front of an apartment building for five or six hours, we would want to identify that there were people from that apartment building that were coming to get their car washes and not people coming from across town to a stationary facility.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
No, I, I apologize. What I'm saying is if we have someone who's parked in front of an apartment complex, we want to be able to verify that the cars that are getting washed are from that complex and not coming from across town.
Oh, I see.
And, and again, that is something that is part of the education process. We'll identify what's appropriate. We've put it in, but enforcement is all about trust between the community and the enforcement arm. And we're going to try and establish that. So while it's in there, if that becomes onerous or if that becomes a problem, we will not be enforcing that, but, but coming back for an adjustment. But that's the purpose. The purpose is to have some verification, if we have a stationary individual, that we can then make sure that they're not just setting up camp and having folks come from all over town in Orkin and everywhere else.
And in terms of capacity and who would those records be submitted to?
They actually will come to our office and so we'll take a peek at those. They can be simple. They don't have to be super detailed. You can get, I mean, there's the easy process of you have a sheet of paper or you have receipts from when you dumped your water, you know, a list of who you did and, or vehicles and locations. And then if you did eight cars that day and, or over like a three or four day period and then you went to the wastewater disposal site and then dumped your water, you could mark it off on your little list for this was where I dumped and it was this amount of cars. It doesn't have to be complicated. It's just kind of making sure, again, we're ensuring mobility and that things are being disposed of appropriately and it's not continuing to go into people's flower beds and storm drains and everything else.
Thank you. And then I, I, it's not so much a question, but a point. It was brought to my attention that in years past, we've had like brochures that talk about mobile car washing. And I believe I saw on there that, and maybe I, I, please tell me if I'm wrong, but I thought I saw on there that folks would be able to dispose the water like on trees. And so I, I don't know if I saw that correctly or not, but on that same brochure, I do remember there being like images of folks putting sandbags on the stormwater drains to prevent from the water flowing into the drain. Would that be something that we would be, we would be able to, to do rather than asking them to do a whole holding tank?
The, it's, it's kind of, I think, misunderstood with that. When, I, I know what flyer you mean. It's actually a pretty neat flyer. It's got some great details in it. But when you're putting something off and you're burm-ing it, the intent is at the end you're going to collect. All it's doing, all they're saying is, is if you have a storm drain here, your water can't go in it and your water can't just sit. So you can berm it off like you're supposed to, but when you're finished, you're supposed to then collect that water so that it gets disposed of properly. It's not supposed to sit in the street or the gutter afterwards.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in listening to some of the people that spoke at public comment, there's a, I, I believe there's a misunderstanding of the water systems that we have, the disposal system. And we actually have two systems. There is the stormwater system that we don't want this water from the car washes to get involved with. And then we have the system that we have that is connected to our homes, the sewer system that goes through the wastewater treatment plant. And I heard some people commenting on their, on their, with their comments that the water going into the sewer system, and that's, that's not really the case, depending on, on how you're talking about it. So perhaps if you're not the right person, then we need to get the right person to explain the difference between the two systems and the system that we're trying to protect at the direction, again, of the state of California. And maybe our multipurpose person over here, Rosie, could, could help you do that. So you can do this kind of like duet.
So do you want me to kind of introduce what you're going to explain?
Yeah, that sounds good. It's basically explaining the two, two systems of.
Well, I just, I just need.
Wastewater within our system.
Two ways of disposing.
Different system.
Well, it's kind of, yeah, it's stormwater versus, versus your sewer water. This is two different systems.
My suggestion is that you give the answer and then she repeats your answer in, in, in those little short comments. Explain the difference in the two systems after you've given a few, or 45 seconds or so of your explanation and she can pick it up and then you can finish and she can pick it up.
Okay. When thinking in terms of wastewater in our homes versus storm drains that we see throughout the city, we actually have two separate systems in place.
You're, you're, excuse me. You're, you're speaking to the people outside. Don't, you're not speaking to her. You're speaking to, speaking to the people in the microphone so they can hear you in the public. Just, and then she will do it, just the translation.
And speak into the mic so that we can get the.
Could you not hear me? I thought I was speaking into the mic.
Yes.
I know.
Well, I just want to make sure I have the verbiage right because this is now getting into the technical.
I'll use, I'll use your simple.
So are we talking, I mean, you're talking about storm, you're talking about basically just like drains on the sidewalk?
Yeah. That's different. That's different from your home. Your potties are different from the drains in the street.
I'm sorry?
Collector de aguas pulviales.
I'm glad. That's what Google says.
Why, she's good.
So we're talking about el drenaje de la casa a comparación al drenaje de la calle. Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure because there's Google speak and then there's.
and then there's
Yeah.
Right, yeah. All right. So
If you think that they did, I'm happy with you.
I think, I think, yeah, I mean, we just explained the two differences.
Okay.
So estamos tratando de explicar la diferencia entre los drenajes de la casa y el drenaje de la calle. El drenaje de la casa, where does that go? The one in the house?
That goes to the, to a treatment plant.
El drenaje de la casa va al vertedero, donde se trata el agua, el agua sucia. Y el agua de la calle va a, va a la playa, va al océano. Ajá.
There's the river on the sea.
Así es que la, la agua de la casa va al vertedero y el agua de la calle va al océano.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Cordero, or comments?
No, I'm afraid.
Okay. I, I think, I think people need to understand when, when we get complaints, but the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, gets complaints, then they let us know that they've had complaints. And, and we need to react to those complaints and, and install regulations. And we're not trying to be heavy-handed. We are just, we just can't have this, this, this discharge going down, stormwater, out to the ocean. And so we have a responsibility here as council members to make sure that we put in these regulations. And that's, that's what we're trying to do. And we're not trying to put people out of business. So, and, and I applaud those parents who are taking their, their kids to work and showing them how to work and giving them a good work, work ethic. So
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Okay. And I, I think it's really important that the public knows this. I also got an email from a woman who is elderly. She can't, she can't do wash her own car. This is convenient for her to have someone to come to her home to wash her car and detail if necessary. This is not going to have the impact on that. Right, Mr. Watson?
Again, we encourage, we encourage the, the mobility of this.
We want the mobility. We want the compliance of the wa, so that the discharged water isn't going down to the ocean. We want them to have a business license and we want the mobility. And that's what they say, their mobile car washes. Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you. Mr. Watson, my, my question is under section 4-2122, no person shall hire, engage, or use mobile commercial washing services which does not have a valid mobile commercial washing permit from the city. Does that mean the employees that they hire have to have a permit?
No, it's simply, it's simply by the organization or the person, the person who's taking the money, not the employees thereof.
Okay. That would have been page nine at the very bottom. And then on page eight, section 4-21.15, it says that section A, mobile commercial washing is banned from all city streets, easements, and city-owned properties. My, example of my car washer coming to my house, he has to do it on the street. He can't do it in my driveway because it, it wouldn't work.
And, and again, you know, this, this is how it's been drafted. If that, if that turns out to be a, a significant har, handicap, we'll come back to it. But what we're trying to do is we're encouraging it to be on private property because then it's easier to control.
Absolutely.
And, and again, my folks are going to be out looking for compliance, not looking for enforcement. That's really the intent. And if the, if, ultimately, if someone did look at your car being washed in the street, call us. Frankly, these guys and gals are pretty fast. They probably beat us to it. And we'd come back and, and just see if there was any residue, because that's the other thing, trying to eliminate residue in the streets.
So what if someone had a big front yard? Could they just drive their car up on that yard and have it washed?
Again, re, reasonability, that's one of the reasons why we want to have an educational conversation with the car washers so they know what's the most appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we want the intent to be understood by the, the folks as well. The intent is to eliminate the runoff that we've had.
And the intent is we're not stopping anybody from doing any type of car washing, mobile car washing business at all whatsoever.
We're encouraging it. The difficulty, we're, we're, we are at a, at a juggernaut because we're in a situation where the state is constantly in, in drought. There's issues related to water. This is a industry that ultimately will probably have to go waterless because state regulations will probably prohibit, you know, gallons of water being used for car washes that is not recycled. But for right now, what we're trying to do is that baby step.
Right. Well, I know
Get our folks where they need to be.
I know with the Water Quality Regional Board, they are very stringent in what runs off into our storm drains because they regulate what goes into the rivers and into the ocean, and it's going to get worse. It's going to get to the point where we have to make sure that the water that comes off our roofs when it rains does not go down the storm drain. And that's another project that they're working on. And it's just going to affect everybody who lives under a roof here. And I, it's, we live in California. It's an environmental, you know, state. And some of the laws are great and some of them are just, you know, a little out there. So, but I just want people to understand that we're not stopping them from doing their business. They become compliant like every other business does in the city of Santa Maria. And that would be a very good lesson to teach the children that they're bringing along them, that when you do have a business, these are the rules you have to play by. And everybody has to do this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Are we in discussion?
Comments. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, that was my, my question. Is it going to be a, is this discussion or just general comments?
Yes.
Okay. So when I assume the position as a city council member, I swore to, to respect and comply with the, with the laws, even if we don't like them. And most of the time we usually seen as, because we're the closer, closest to the community, as we are the ones just pointing down and, you know, this coming from the state and, and, and I had the opportunity of speaking with some mobile car wash owners during these weeks. I went straight and we have a conversation. And I do agree. I think it's a, there's a big misinformation out there. And after having a conversation, a couple of minutes, they understood what was it about. So I think it's having these workshops, educational workshops are necessary. And because it's, they understood that it's not about us attacking them or their way of living. It's about how we can, how they can adjust their activity inside a, a legal framework. And I would like also to say in Spanish. Cuando asumi la gran responsabilidad de ser consejero de la ciudad, tomé la decisión de respetar y seguir las leyes, a pesar de que estas no nos gusten. En el caso de los, de esta regulación, por lo general, se ve al consejo de la ciudad como el malo o el que está dañando. Pero esa es una regulación que viene desde el estado. Y Santa María está un paso. Estamos tratando de hacer ese paso que, que nos están de alguna manera forzando las leyes estatales. Durante estas semanas he tenido la oportunidad de ir y platicar frente a frente con varios dueños de car wash móviles. Y después de una conversación tuve la, ellos entendieron cuál era la situación. Y creo que ese es el gran reto que tenemos, la desinformación que se, se expuso, se creó este estado de pánico. Pero no estamos aquí para trabajar en equipo en la comunidad, el consejo de la ciudad. Y esta regulación no es para atacar o para sacar del, del trabajo a la familia, sino para que pueda esta actividad económica ser llevada a cabo dentro del marco de la ley. So that's, that's all, that's my comment. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's just what I was going to say.
Good. I'm glad. Ms. Soto, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I, I guess I can just make it once the motion and the second is made.
Okay.
I guess I will make that motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt I M number 3C under the consent calendar.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to start by thanking our city, our city staff for, for, for bringing this forward back to us after the conversation that we had last summer. And for me, my stance is still very mu, not my stance, but my concern is still very much an environmental one and how this will, and how this impacts, you know, our oceans and, you know, our rivers because of the pollutants that go into the stormwater drains. However, after, after having conversations with the mobile car wash owners and also during the conversation that we had here on the dais, I, I am concerned at the fact that as happy as I'm, as happy as I am that we're moving forward with providing workshops for folks around how this ordinance will impact them, I often find that we as council members may make decisions and take on votes and create policies and ordinances without really talking to the folks first about how these policies will ultimately impact them. I know that we've done it in the past, you know, with developers where we, we come to the table and we talk about, you know, whether it may be a fee system or, or whatnot, and we try to find some way to compromise. And I'm saddened that we didn't take the time to do that with this ordinance, that we didn't take the time to first learn about, and I'm not saying that, that you all didn't do that, but definitely the conception in the community is that we didn't take the time to sit with folks and to, and to hear from them and what their concerns are on, on imposing an ordinance such as this before it coming to the council. And so I think for future, no, I would really like to see this process be one where we, we take into consideration the folks who are most impacted by the policies that we, that we vote on and that we put in place prior to us being in the position that we are, that we find ourselves in now.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I know we did that with H2A, but that was sort of brand new for us, the H2A. But when we did the flower vendors and we've done other ordinances, we do, because we have to comply with, with what the state comes down and tells us. But I think we are going to be listening so that if we need to make adjustments to this, and it's very important to listen to all the people in Santa Maria and how it's going to impact them. So, but thank you very much for your comments. Okay, so do I, I have a first and second. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, I'd like to switch the order of the last two items and take the regular business item first. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of item 5A?
The city council will consider the vision, guiding principles, and areas of change and stability general plan update.
Okay, and Mr., that's not Mr. Eng, okay?
Good evening, Madam
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Dana Eadie. I'm the Acting Planning Manager in Community Development. And we're going to be giving you a general plan update presentation this evening. And the presentation's going to be made by Mr. Ron Whitmore with Ramey and Associates. And he should be available through Zoom. Thank you.
Mr. Whit, there you go. I was just going to let you know, you have, um, control of the mouse and the presentation.
Thank you. I wanted to share my screen.
No, I've shared the presentation for you.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you wouldn't mind speaking a little bit louder into your microphone, that would be very helpful.
Is this better?
Uh, maybe a little louder.
Louder.
Uh, is this better?
Nope.
You're, you're gonna have to speak up.
Uh, maybe I should call it?
I got a little bit of a problem.
Can you hear me better?
Should I, should I use a different voice? Should I maul it instead of you?
Let's, let's go ahead like you are. And, and if we find that it's, it's too low, then maybe we'll have you call in.
Okay, I'll do my best to speak properly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, Madam Patino, like, if you make any other errors. We appreciate you making time on your schedule for the general plan update tonight, the advanced slides.
Hey, you should be able to do that.
I'm sorry. I'm supposed to be accessing this slide?
No, you are. I'm going to double check because I thought I gave you control. So you have control.
You're not sharing the screen. The, your display that I have shared is now giving you control to remote the advance of the slides. Okay.
So just try to
Just write your answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so as you may recall in our trouble, we will discuss the project, uh, we do the project schedule, the approach, the community norm needs, and public influence, and you'll get sites from first round, there's surveys, and existing conditions, ready service, and everything. And I would like to briefly summarize for you the outcomes of that initial work, as well as activity to follow. So also give you a preview of what's coming next. The high rate open, and I will discuss it in the following week for consideration, to draft a vision, if that is possible, to urge
Madam Mayor, apparently the public can't hear Mr. Whitmore.
Okay.
So I think we might have to ask you to call in. Yeah. Unless, Dana?
Yeah, I can probably just go ahead and walk through the presentation. I would just, I'll just say next slide. So this slide is just giving an overview of the planning process. And we're currently in the second phase, which is the listening and visioning phase. So the last few months, as Ron was mentioning, we were going through, just looking at existing conditions in the city. We developed a number of different existing conditions reports on the city. So in areas of utilities and transportation and mobility and things like that. So moving forward, the next phase would be the plan alternatives phase. And so this slide is showing just the general decision-making process. We have many different workshops and get a lot of input from community members and stakeholders. And then that's provided, you know, to the planning commission and then to your council. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned, we had an initial engagement phase where we developed a website in English and in Spanish. It's imagine santamaria.com. We also had a number of stakeholder interviews. We've had seven technical advisory committee meetings so far. We've also had a couple of different online surveys that were in July and September of last year. And then we had two public visioning workshops last year. Those were in November and December. And, and then we also had a planning commission hearings, department advisory group meetings, and, and also a city council meeting back in October. Next slide, please.
Nope, did I go the wrong way?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. So this just summarizes those existing conditions reports I was talking about. There's environmental report, and I, I mentioned this already, but land use and community design, health and equity, demographics, housing, economic and market. And all of those, all of those reports are posted on the, the website, imagine santamaria.com, if anyone would like to take a look at those. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we're in the second phase of the, the general plan update now. And that includes developing the vision, guiding principles, and areas of change and stability. developing the vision, guiding principles, and areas of change and stability for the city. And we did have, like I said, some community workshops and surveys last year to get some input from the community on what they would like to see Santa Maria be like in the next 25 years, so the year 2045. And we took the draft vision statement and guiding principles and this document to the planning commission for a study session in February. And then we had a hearing just last month in March where it was recommended for approval to your city council for today's hearing. Next slide, please. And so one of the... some of the visioning engagement work that we did was a workshop, and we asked participants in the workshop to assist us in identifying areas within Santa Maria where we might be missing... there might be missing assets or challenges in the city, or... and we also asked them, what is their highest priority of qualities to preserve and enhance in Santa Maria? What types of changes are most important to them? And where in the city should the general plan focus? And then we also asked just what big ideas do community members have for Santa Maria? And so what we learned from all of that engagement, we actually took all of that information and we put it together into a vision statement for... that describes Santa Maria in the year 2045. And along with that, we developed some guiding principles, and those are directions to follow to essentially achieve the vision that's been developed. And then the other part of the document is the areas of stability and change. And those are areas that were identified where changes could occur within Santa Maria or improvements could be made within Santa Maria. And then there's areas of transformation that were identified, and that's really where transformational change or big changes, planned changes could occur in the city. And so we still have some unanswered questions, mainly related to the downtown area, like really what's the future of downtown? How will that be revitalized? Areas where the city could potentially expand in the future? And so those questions will be looked at in the next phases, which are phases three and four, after this document that we're presenting tonight gets approval. Next slide, please. So this just talks about the methodology that we use to develop the vision statement. We took all of that information that we gained in the existing conditions reports, interviews, and surveys, and we looked at all of that and then put together in that document qualities of Santa Maria that we want to preserve, maybe some opportunities to look at for the future, and then challenges and changes as well. So this is the draft vision statement for 2045. I'll go ahead and read it. Santa Maria in 2045 is a community where families can establish and maintain multi-generational roots. It is close-knit, culturally diverse, and economically inclusive. This is possible in part because Santa Maria offers affordable, safe, attractive, and healthy homes and neighborhoods for all residents. This is also possible because of the availability of high-quality education, jobs, and economic opportunity. Building from a strong foundation in the agricultural, retail, healthcare, and business service industries, Santa Maria has continued to diversify by expanding the training and skills of residents and by adapting to new technologies and broader economic trends. And there's a little more to it. People are proud of their history and heritage. This is reflected in the diverse, well-preserved historical resources and the attractive, inviting streets and public gathering places. Museums, art venues, a strong civic sector, and the many welcoming community events and celebrations are all evidence of a vibrant local culture. Residents have convenient access on foot and by car, bus, and bicycle to jobs, school, community amenities like parks and sports fields, and the region's natural environment. Public services are reliable, inclusive, and efficient, and the community is well-served by equitable, modern, and sustainable infrastructure, facilities, and utilities. And so this is just a list of the draft guiding principles that are in the draft document we provided to you. It has all the different subjects that we took a look at, and those are areas that are going to be focused on in our general plan update. Next slide. This is a map that shows the draft areas of change and stability. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, a lot of this information was gained from the work, the public workshops and outreach that was completed as part of Phase One of the project. And so looking at this map, the areas of stability enhancement, which are areas that are mostly built out, where these are areas that could be enhanced, are the northwest, northeast, and southeast neighborhoods. And then the areas of potential transformation are the downtown area, neighborhoods in the city core, the southwest neighborhoods, Main and Broadway corridors. And then we also have some areas that are identified for potential annexation and expansion, and that's, you know, the northwest or out to the east. Next slide, please. So again, the next phases of the project, we're just going to take a look at these questions. So, you know, what's the future of downtown? How can competing needs be balanced along Main and Broadway between, you know, putting in more multimodal types of transportation for walking, biking, but continue to allow Main and Broadway to be, you know, utilized for business needs? And then how and where should Santa Maria grow? So as I mentioned, the next phase is going to be the plan alternatives, and we're looking at late spring and summer of this year. And so we're going to be developing land use maps, visual renderings, and some alternatives analysis to look at potential land use changes that could occur in the city. And then after that, the fourth phase is doing some policy and plan development, and that would be in the fall. And this just gives an example of what you're going to see as part of the plan alternatives. So this is an example of a land use scenario where the first scenario is looking at doing development kind of more around the edges of that city. This is not Santa Maria, it's just a city. And then the second alternative is looking more at infill development. And then as part of that, we will also have some visualizations of changes that could potentially occur within the city. And again, this is not Santa Maria in particular, it's just giving you an idea of what to expect. And this is just looking at the type of alternatives analysis that we would look at. So looking at existing and then what you would expect with each of those alternatives. So developing on the... expanding the city essentially versus doing some infill development. Next slide, please. And I know you can't read this, it's just giving you an idea of what the policy and plan development will look like when we start putting that together for you. So our recommendation is that the city council by motion approve the draft vision, guiding principles, and areas of change and stability document that we provided to you, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Waterfield?
Dana, when was the last time we did an update on the general plan?
Well, I believe it's been at least 20 years, and Director Ng could probably confirm that for me.
There's different chapters of the general plan that has different dates that has been last updated, but the majority of the chapters in the existing general plan was updated in the 90s.
In the 90s, okay. Just in case I get asked that question in the morning. Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go two slices back in the presentation, please? Oh, that one. So can you explain elaborately a little bit of what's Alternative 1 or 2?
Yes, Councilmember Escobedo through the mayor. So like, for example, the says total population, existing 60,000, and so Alternative 1 would add, it'd be 60,800, and then... and it actually is tied to that previous slide I was showing with the two different maps. That's where that's coming from. So if you went with Alternative 1, the idea is that that could increase it by up to 67,800, or Alternative 2, which was doing more infill development, you would have maybe fewer at 67,100. So that's what you would expect to see as part of our plan alternative analysis for Santa Maria, something to that effect.
So the Alternative 1 would be infill, and this 2, it would be...
So Alternative 1 was at the... is on the left, and that's more at the edges of the city. And then Alternative 2 is looking more infill development inside the existing city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I think Mr. Ng would like to add something to that.
Mayor, councilmembers, as we move into the next phase of general plan, you'll likely see more than two alternatives. That's dependent on the analysis that we're going to do in coming up with the different growth scenarios. So as you know, we have projections for year 2045 for population, households, and employment. So we're looking at a population of roughly 140,000, and also an increase in the number of residential units, and an increase in the number of jobs. And the next phase is an analysis of how those will be distributed. Where will the housing be? Where will the jobs be? How dense will the housing be? And so there will be enough scenarios to do a comparison and a contrast for us to analyze what's best for the city moving forward. The... what you see on this slide is just a example of what we're going to do, and the scenarios will be looked at, not just in land use, but how it impacts transportation and the ability for the city to provide services. And that includes recreation, public safety, and impact on infrastructure and utilities. It's kind of a holistic, comprehensive analysis, and because we understand that land use has impacts on other aspects of quality of life.
whoever... I think you said there was room for growth on the northwest side? Where?
So if we go to that map, so that came out of some surveys that we did, and yes, that's the correct... thank you. And yes, that area was mentioned as potentially doing some expansion.
Where?
Um...
West.
Yeah, it's northwest. I'm just trying to picture...
West of Blosser?
Yeah, it's... Right, it would require annexation, and it's in that more agricultural area.
Why would we be going into ag land? I think we had a buffer there at one time, and what happened to that? Because I know the high school district wanted to build a high school there years ago, and we said, no, you couldn't do that, because once you start building, that just puts a stop on ag land because there's all the restrictions of housing residential and ag land. Why would we even think of going west of Blosser?
Well, again, this is a draft map, and it was taken from a lot of surveys and a lot of public input that we received. Again, it would require annexation, and there's a process, you know, to go through that.
Well, I realize that.
Yeah.
But once we say, yeah, it's okay, then everyone will... they'll come back and say, well, you guys voted on it, you must be in favor of it.
Well, we'll be... yeah. It would be the council's ultimate decision on this. I think what Ms. Eadie and Mr. Ng are saying is we... at this point, we did a survey that... so we recognize with the Rena numbers and the state numbers that we're going to have to accommodate growth. And so we did a survey also of hearing what people were looking for for the type of growth. It kind of balanced at least into those two scenarios of trying to grow within or grow without, and that there's probably going to be a balance between those, and like Chun said, maybe even a few other options. So we're just... at this point, it's conceptual options. How would we fit all this into a city? And we could fit it with our current footprint. It would be really hard, and it'll really change some of our neighborhood characteristics, or we could do it with a balance of semi-annexation or not. And one thought on the... on that northwest that also came out was it could also potentially provide another access point to divert trucks off of Broadway and Main, reduce the impact on 101, not have trucks coming across town, and then have another bridge going north of the river connecting to 166. So, hey, we talked to Slow County already.
And we've had that conversation over and over. It's not a bad idea.
No, and it's...
But it's not reality.
Yeah, we're still... well, 200 million bucks, it could be reality. But we're still very conceptual at this, and it will be for the council. So at this point, it is really vision and principles of how we would go there. Then we will start getting into the details of drawing it on the map, and where would we go, and would we want to annex this or that? Where would the urban growth boundaries be? And then again, as Dana mentioned and Chun, that's still, at that point, is just potentially updating our sphere of influence and getting that approved through LAFCO, and then going through future annexations. And you're right, that if the annexations, if they're within our sphere of influence, there is some tacit and actual real approval from the council to proceed with those.
No, I know we're gonna have to... I think we're gonna have to do annexations, and that's gonna be really touchy, but I see it as going east and never going west. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I mean, I... not so much a question, but more like a thought and a comment based on the presentation and based on these result... based on this particular slide. And I've had this conversation with Mr. Stillwell in the past just about the importance of making sure that we have efficient and equitable connectivity for the residents in the north part of town to where now our main shopping areas are, which are all the way to the south part of town. And I know that we... at least I've heard from residents how that has been an issue, but then also the conversation about like parks and recre... and how the way that we've started to grow, or the way that we've developed and grown, at least in this present time, I just find that it's so thoughtful... it's thoughtful in the way that we're constantly thinking about like making sure that we have accessible parks for the residents in that particular neighborhood. And so, you know, I'm interested to see, based on... based on... I'm interested to see what future conversations... what ideas come up from future conversations about how we can further enhance the quality of life when it comes to accessible, like, transportation and recreation, not parks, parks, for the folks in the north part of town.
Ms. Waterfield?
You know what I find so fascinating with Santa Maria? I came here in 1985, and we were the hub of manufacturing and industry and doing all of those, you know, blue-collar worker jobs that we just... we pumped it out. It was just absolutely awesome. And I see how we have transpired to the technology area, not so much industry and manufacturing anymore, because that's just the way the world is changing in those spots. And I just... I'm glad to see that we've kept up with the trends, along with education. Alan Hancock has done extremely well. The universities that have come to Santa Maria have... are doing exceptionally well as well. But one thing that I would like to see, and I know it's going to be pricey for the city of Santa Maria, and some way that we can work this in to the general plan with... in pockets is... City Councilmember Soto had mentioned recreation. We need swimming pools. We only have one for the entire city, and we've got a lot of... a lot of people, from the elderly to the little ones, that like to swim. And some way within that 2045 era, we can get a swimming pool or two added to the city of Santa Maria. So that... I would love to see that for our community.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, a comment, I had the opportunity of attending one of the, the meetings, the workshops that put, that was put together before the pandemic. It was a really interesting and really big, it was a huge group of people and with different backgrounds. And then we make small groups and they're talking about what we had, what we'd like to see, how we'd like to, how, how we would like Santa Maria to be in 20, 30, 50 years. And it was a really good, unfortunately for the pandemic happens and yeah, we couldn't keep having those huge in-person workshops. And some of this, the, the input I've been receiving, then the campaign happened and people started sharing with me about housing and recreation activities for, for the family as a whole. So I'm looking forward to see Santa Maria that provide more affordable housing for everybody and how we can manage a sustainable growth because we have to be really mindful of the way we're going to grow, if it's going to be expanding, if it's going to be go up. And so I'm looking forward to having those big conversations and input from everybody and see a Santa Maria that it's what we envision and we would like to see, a place for our families to grow and, and enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In listening to what you're saying and, and hearing some of the other comments that are being made, as Mrs. Waterfield's comment, I mean, we're, we're not that far away from 50 years ago when she came here in 1985. I mean.
Hey, 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 I was born in 89.
So, so, so we're talking about things that are going to take place and have taken place over many, many years. So I'm, I'm hearing what you have to say and I'm kind of taking what you have to say as something that is, this isn't taking place next week. And, and, and we're, we should welcome the idea that you have many of these things to say, to look at for 2045 and 2050 and, you know, I, I'm not too afraid of anything that you have to say. So let's, let's listen to, the more ideas we listen to, the better prepared we're going to be when the time comes that the actual decision makers who are probably in first grade today, those decision makers can, can make those decisions from today forward and they don't, you know, we're not making those. And none of us sitting up here today are going to make those decisions for 2045. So I appreciate what you're doing and how you're saying and the options that you're giving all of us as council people to look for and start to talk about. I, I, I don't know whether it's swimming pools or parks, but you know, those, those opportunities for us to decide on those, for these chairs to decide on those will come in, in the many, many years in the future for us to consider. So I, I, I don't know that we're spending maybe too much time on some of the specific things that we'd all like to have, but we got to wait and see. The mayor, I could tell just listening to her and watching her body language, she doesn't want to go west. And we.
Well, I said that, that not even my body language, I said I didn't want to go west.
She doesn't want to go west and, and she, we can't go west. Well, the fact is that in 25 years, we may be going west. Things may change to force us to go west. So I, I agree with her right now, but the person that sits here in 2045 may not. So thank you very much for giving us these extra ideas for all of us to start thinking about today.
And, and in terms of.
Go ahead, Ms. Soto.
And in terms of the vision that we have in front of us today, when I read it, I, I thought it was just beautifully written and I can very well imagine myself wanting to be part of this Santa Maria that you've, that with community input have been able, with the vision that you all have been able to generate here. And so it's, it's exciting to see. So I'm curious to hear what the public comments.
No, I, I think, yeah, I think we have, and it's not that I'm trying to be negative because I, I've, I've been to some of the focus groups and I think things that people have put down there for the downtown specific plan and, and for all the shrubbery down Main Street. In, in order for us to have a downtown, it's going to have to be accessible to pedestrians. I know that. And so that's going to be a little change and tweak in, in our environment. But I do think that when we plan things and if we make decisions that other boards and other council people have to deal with, you know, I always think about the woman that came to the council, it wasn't too long ago, and she had a small child and lived not too far from here and wanted a park closer to her. And there isn't any room for a park closer to her. And so to make sure.
Remember that.
And to make sure that we have those swimming pools or we have those spaces that people can enjoy all over town so that they don't have to drive miles, you know, to get those things. That's, that's what really concerns me because I think it's important. People like their neighborhoods and with the RENA numbers coming out, we will have housing to do in the low income, in the medium and in the high income. We really have a variety of housing that we're going to have to put into Santa Maria and I understand that. And, and I, I think it's really important, I learned this years ago, it, it can't be just low income, it's got to be high income because the people that are executive directors, that are the bosses, that want to live in, in a, in a real, real, real nice home, we have to be able to accommodate them because if we don't, they move out of Santa Maria and then they don't belong to our Kiwanis Clubs, our Rotary Clubs and which are giving back to our community, which benefits our kids. So it's like a cycle here. And then people will start at the bottom and then start move up, moving up into housing. So I'm, I'm glad we have a variety of housing to fill because I think that's really important. I think that's one of the attractions of Santa Maria, that there's just, there is a variety, but to have, to know that in the future, there'll be a greater variety for people to move here.
You know, Madam Mayor, it's interesting because when Mr. Cordero mentioned the process of everything going along in, in 1985 when I arrived, I went to work for the Economic Development Association in 1991 and ENUS was in the Williamson Act. And so they were talking about the 10 years it had to come out and the vision that they went through to what they were going to do. And that went through so many different characters. It was just, oh gosh, it was just amazing. Today, it doesn't look like any of those designs that were from the past, but it's just, you know, the time does go by and we do get there and it's, it's, it's the councils that will take charge and push this on this way, like we will vote on this today. We may not ever see the result of what we voted on, but we got it started. We got it started so that these wonderful staff people can go and, and put their wonderful brains together and, and create something wonderful with the community in mind and the community being a part of it. And I just, I just think it's just so exciting.
I think of Union Valley Parkway and I remember Larry Lavenino goes, probably not in my lifetime and he's still alive.
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any written correspondence on this item and I do have a few hands raised.
Request to speak?
And Zoom.
Okay.
Let's start with, Brian Hollander has a hand up. Mr. Hollander, did you want to speak on this item or on the CDPG item?
I wanted to speak on the CDPG.
Okay, I'll lower your hand and that will be the next item that comes up. So bear with us.
Thank you.
Okay, Lori Tamora.
Good evening. My name's Lori Tamora. I've been planning Convest and a longtime resident of the Santa Maria Valley. And I wanted first to acknowledge the effort that the city is doing in regards to updating the general plan. The last effort started in 1988.
And it lasted till 1993. Think about that timeframe when there were no computers, there were no cell phones, there were no laptops, internet, and here we are 30 years later, looking at our next plan. And I think the city of Santa Maria should be very proud of the effort that's occurred over the last 30 years because the city, in all intent and purposes, followed the plan from those leaders and decision makers and community members that participated in that last effort. One of the things that I always remember about city staff was that infrastructure was not going to be a reason for stopping growth in Santa Maria. The city always went through a strong effort of looking for funding sources for their water system, sewer system, roads, drainage, so that there was no arbitrary limitation on the opportunities for growth in the city of Santa Maria. And I hope that policy and effort will continue as we move forward into the next generation of planning for the city of Santa Maria. It is important to note that the Green Belt Agreement that was adopted by the both city, county and the city of Guadalupe in 1993 and validated by LAFCO was the first time that that kind of an agreement was established in this valley. That, that agreement was a strong element because it, I'm going to almost say forced landowners and developers to focus on building within the city of Santa Maria. So the idea that growth cannot happen because that Green Belt Agreement is on both sides of Santa Maria, on the west as well as on the east. The annexation efforts that will come forward through this effort means we will amend that Green Belt Agreement, but it's not absolute. You as a city council, the County of Santa Barbara and LAFCO have the right and the ability to amend that agreement. So the opportunities for growth, both east or west, or just east, if that is the case, will amend that Green Belt Agreement and that'll hold the line for the next 30 years. I look forward to working with the staff and the, the decision makers and I have one suggestion in this visioning document. I probably read it six times, provided comments to the consultants and to the staff and I read it fresh again this weekend. And there is one confusing section in the document on page three where it provides the existing general plan policies and goals. I, I think that either needs to be deleted from the document because the whole document is forward thinking, those, those policies were adopted 30 years ago. Or those policies need to have a date on it that says adopted in 1993, you know, to be amended through this policy or through this process. But I personally think it should be deleted because it, it's confusing when you read that and then you read the rest of the document. So I should have made that comment a long time ago, but it just occurred to me reading it fresh again. Everything else is, looks great and I look forward to all of the other documents and efforts that we'll have as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have another hand by Ken Huff. Hello.
Hi, this is Ken Huff, Santa Barbara County Action Network and Mayor Patino and council members. Thank you for your service. I just have an issue with, I mean, the whole item that the staff has done, I think, really good work and the consultant, but on page two of the staff report, it says it will ultimately be necessary for the city to annex additional land east of 101 and/or to the northwest of the city. And I, I think this is, we're talking about a vision document and I think it's quite early to be saying something that conclusory, that it will ultimately be necessary for the city to annex. Instead, consider while it may ultimately be necessary for the city to annex land to here or there, the city intends to, to avoid, to the extent possible, annexing expansion into the prime ag lands around it, which of course, the, the document before you makes a big, it makes a lot of, a lot of points about how agriculture is so important to this area. And so it is and we should say that. Did the outreach to the residents that was talked about, did it suggest, did potential areas for annexation? Because the report I just heard, listening tonight, sounded like that, but did people actually come to meetings and say, we need to annex? Questions for you. Thank you very much for your attention.
That was the last speaker, Madam Mayor.
So I, I did ask you for any correspondence, right?
Yes, ma'am, and there was none.
I'll bring this item back, the council for discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the city council approve the draft vision, guiding principles and areas of change and stability.
I guess there's going to be no discussion.
We can discuss after.
After a second.
After the first and second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second and now I'm going to ask for any discussion. Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, I, I think that Mr. Huff brings up, Ken brings up a, a, a good idea, a good point. You, you alluded to the same thing, Mayor, and I think, I think we're, we're making these assumptions and these decisions based on the standards we're living within today. And my effort a few minutes ago was to suggest that the people of the future will make them when it's 2045 and 2050. So, so I, I agree that, and I think everyone would agree, that we should do our best to protect the ag land, but things will change, other things will change that, that may cause all of us to, to, to think differently. When, when society changes, the needs change and if there's another way to increase the population without annexation, then I, I don't know how that would be. Our city is what, I guess you might call it a, a sprawling community style. We, we have chosen not to go up so we don't have those large buildings that hold, you know, 5,000 and 10,000 people. So I, you know, I, I don't have the fear that, that, that I think I kind of got from, from, from Ken. I, I think that we should always be aware of it, but it's not happening in the very near future. And I, I, I don't, I don't, I, I think there's a lot of concern that these things might happen in the next couple of years and that's not the case again.
Mr. Stillwell?
If I might clarify, because I think the council is raising important issues. The step tonight is to focus on whether the vision, whether you, how did I write it down? Whether you're inspired by the vision or at least think it's the Santa Maria you want to see. And so the vision statement itself doesn't talk about annexation or not annexing. Of course, if the council would, wants to amend the vision statement to include that, you could, but it does include things such as proud heritage and history, recognizing the strong foundation in the agricultural industry. So, you know, future councils can take that as preserve our agricultural, don't annex or preserve it and, and be considered about it. And then with the guiding principles, there, the first one is agricultural identity. And again, that provides some flexibility to future councils, but does highlight that this council in creating the vision and guiding principles for the general plan for the future decades prioritizes the ag identity as an important principle for the city of Santa Maria.
You know, I think what Mr. Huff is trying to say, and I would concur, is that those are open spaces, that, that farmland is really important. are open spaces, that farmland is really important because it sort of makes Santa Maria who we are, and they're open, and they're green, and they're beautiful, and the smell of strawberries. And, yeah, we don't really like things to change real well, but like you said, we're not going to be the decision makers on that, so, and I understand that. I have people saying, gee, I wish Santa Maria was back like it was in the 50s. And we all are sitting here because we love our city and we love the way it is right now. And we know, we know it's going to change.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, that would be my, my comment would be, you know, we're focusing more on the, how we would like to see Santa Maria, kind of like the vision. And definitely, I think it's going to be necessary that in this process, in these next phases, to address all these concerns about the future. And I think it's as much as, have as much input as possible on this because that's our future. I mean, I see my kids playing those future parks, living in those future apartments, houses, so it's, this is huge, this is huge, and it's not going to be also their rule for, in the future. As you say, we may approve it, but maybe the city council members in 50 years will say, you know, maybe they'll exchange it to another thing. So it's a process. So I think that the next phases are going to be really interesting to hear the input from everybody and find a common ground.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I keep saying over and over how exciting it is that we're updating our general plan, and to me, what's been, what I've come to learn as a councilwoman has been how the development and the growth that we've seen in recent years in the City of Santa Maria is really due to the general plan that was put in place, like, in the 90s, right? And so it is important to acknowledge that every step of the way will have a direct impact on future generations. And I think what's most important here, as I've said earlier this evening, is making sure that we continue to hear from residents and really hear what their vision for our community is as we continue to move forward with this process. In terms of, you know, how we're going to grow, whether it's through annexation or growing up, growing and building up, it's definitely an important conversation, but also I think what's most important is having the conversation about like, you know, at what point do we say, like, we've grown enough because we also, you know, we have ample room to grow, you know, on the east and west side? And so I think that those are all very important things for us to keep in mind, but also know that really the folks who are driving this process will continue to be the community members and residents. And so keeping that in mind. But I know that we've addressed this question just with what the mayor asked and what Council Member Cordero asked about annexation, but this is just, it doesn't necessarily mean that this will be the ultimate result, right, of the general plan update, correct?
That's correct. That's why I wanted to mention that if the council adopts the recommended principles, guiding principles, and the vision statement tonight, it doesn't tie down annexation or not annexing as the path forward. It provides those options still for the council to consider in future phases.
Go ahead, Ms. CD.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just, I did want to mention, so this document is still in a draft form, and so both Ms. Tamura and Mr. Huff brought up some points of potential edits in the document. And one of them I wanted to mention is on page 13 where it discusses annexation and expansion. And right now, it does say as the population and economy grow, it will ultimately be necessary. We could change that to may, it may be necessary, because it hasn't been really determined yet. So we could make that change. And then also, Ms. Tamura brought up a point about adding some dates to that other section of the document that talks about our existing general plan. And if your council would like to do that, we could also include some dates in there to make it more clear that when those existing general plan policies were approved.
That would be great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you be able to talk, share what those dates, what those dates, I had to step out.
Yeah, 1988 to 1990.
Right.
Yeah.
1988 to 1993, and at that time, they didn't have any computers or the internet and everything was just basically.
By hand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the reason why it took so long to get it done.
Yeah, and we can go look and confirm exactly what those dates are and just add them in for clarification.
That would be great. It would give us a point of reference. You know, I think back about the councils before us who bought water, state water. That was really controversial, and that was really a great determination of how much we could grow. And I think that councils that go after us are going to have to just make that decision, and I've said this before, how much do we actually want to grow? And that's going to be a decision for other people out there. Because I think Mr. Huff makes a good point when he said, you know, annexation means like, you know, the gates are open, we can grow as much as we want to, but that's a decision that we won't, you know, we certainly won't be making. Maybe some of you will still be on the council, but councils after us will have to make that decision, how much do we really want to grow in Santa Maria? Thank you. Any other comments, questions, comments, anything? Okay. Okay, so we've had the motion and a second, and we've had our discussion. So I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
We already have one.
Pardon?
We have one on the table.
We have, I'm sorry, a motion. I mean, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will go back to item 4A, the CDBG allocations. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider the block grants advisory committee's recommendations for the allocation of fiscal year 2021-22 community development block grant funds. Consider allocating $37,500 to public service programs and consider staff's recommendation for the capital funds.
Ms. Rojo, you will be making our presentation.
Yes.
And it's really sad not to see the CDBG Grants Committee out here in the audience, but.
I'm, I'm sorry?
And you turned them away?
They did show up? Oh, that's very sweet of them. Well, they'll be recognized tonight because they definitely do put in a lot of work to have these recommendations come before you tonight. So good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is the annual public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2021-2022 recommendations by the block grants advisory committee for the allocation of federal community development block grants, better known as CDBG. Okay, there we go. Tonight, we will be asking for the following: to conduct a public hearing to receive comments from the public, consider staff's recommendations for capital funds, consider the block grants advisory committee's recommendations for public services, and allocate your individual $7,500 to public service programs. A little bit about CDBG. CDBG is a program administered by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. It was created over 45 years ago and provides local governments with grant funds to address a variety of needs in the community. CDBG is probably the only federal grant program that allows local discretion as how the funds may be used to best meet the needs of the community. The main requirement is that the city's activities and projects comply with federal regulations and meet one of three national objectives, in particular, primary benefit to low to moderate income persons. Nearly two-thirds of the City of Santa Maria's population falls under that category, which means the majority of the city benefits from these CDBG dollars. The recommendations before you tonight are ones that our block grants advisory committee voted on following application reviews and site visits. And speaking of our committee, I would like to thank our committee members for their time and hard work. They are all volunteers who spend countless hours reading over every single application, attending site visits, writing reports, and deliberating on these proposed allocations. The City of Santa Maria will receive a little more than 1.6 million this upcoming fiscal year. It is about $21,000 less than last year, however. Of this amount, 20% or a little over 321,000 will be available for general administration. 15% or a little over 241,000 will be available for public services, and the remaining 65% or approximately $1,044,000 will be available for capital projects. Plus, there is an additional 75,000 for capital. This money comes from unused funds that, whose projects have been closed out. As part of the CDBG funding process, we conducted a virtual community needs workshop on August 3, 2020, to receive comments from the public and discuss the needs and priorities in the community. There were 21 participants present at the needs workshop, many of whom spoke before the committee. They provided feedback on the increased need to fund programs and projects that assist the homeless, youth, seniors, farm workers, and those who suffer from abuse and/or trauma, residents who may not have access to technology and public art. An increase in food and shelter, particularly affordable housing, was also an issue brought up by several speakers. In January, a month after CDBG applications were due, the committee broke up into five teams and conducted virtual site visits and in-depth review of each application. Following the site visits, each team prepared written reports and shared them with the rest of the committee. The deliberations process was divided into two separate virtual meetings. The first took place on February 8 and allowed applicants to go before the committee to answer any additional questions related to their applications. The second part of the deliberations process took place February 18. During this virtual session, the public could observe but not participate. Committee members took surveys to rank the public services applications and discussed the allocations based on the collective results. The recommendations before you tonight are the results of that discussion. They are listed in attachment F in order of the block grants advisory committee ranking. The committee collectively decided it would not make recommendations related to the upcoming year's capital funding as it felt the city council had already done that during the October 6, 2020 city council meeting. This is the meeting in which the city council reviewed the capital project proposals. In turn, staff will be making some slight recommendations tonight based on a few changes that took place since that meeting. An additional piece of information to share with you tonight that may assist you in making additional decisions for both public services and capital funding. Last month, the special projects division conducted an online needs assessment survey to get a better idea of any impacts the pandemic has had on the community's needs. The survey was available electronically for three weeks. This information was analyzed by our division and was also compared with the online needs assessment survey that was completed by the public in August of 2019. We received 134 responses. 90% of those responses came from personal opinion. This slide shows a comparison between the 2019 and 2021 surveys. The sample size was also about the same, with us receiving a few more responses than two years ago. A focus group made up of service providers from a variety of nonprofit groups throughout the community was also created to obtain additional information about how the pandemic has impacted the needs of the city's residents. Two dozen service providers attended the March 16 virtual meeting. Some of the changes they believe stem from the pandemic include increased level of housing and security, increased number of domestic violence incidents, increased need for sexual assault and crisis response services, increased level of depression amongst school-aged children, and increased demand for more recreation and community enrichment activities. Several service providers also mentioned the increased need for critical services such as food and medicine, as well as more assistance to those experiencing homelessness. This is in line with what the service providers shared during the August 2020 virtual community needs assessment workshop. So we also asked questions about how the pandemic has affected participants, and we asked if they have received assistance as a result of the pandemic. This gives us a better idea of who we are hearing from. As you can tell from the slide, 20% said they have received some sort of assistance as a result of the pandemic. We also asked how the pandemic has affected them. The largest group, bless you, the largest group falls under the kids in virtual learning. Over a third of those who responded have children in virtual learning. Also, we noticed there was almost 20% had an issue with childcare, and about the same had trouble paying their rent or their mortgage. About 17% said their hours had been reduced because of COVID. As far as the meat and potatoes of the survey, we asked the same 32 questions that were asked in 2019. These questions include topics that cover 10 different categories usually funded with CDBG. Participants were asked to rank each activity in order of priority. There are several interesting findings that have resulted from the 2021 survey when compared to the 2019 survey. For the sake of time, I'll hit on a couple of them. For the most part, the priorities for these 10 categories have not changed drastically in the past two years. Three out of the top five priorities continue to receive the greatest number of votes for, quote, highest priority. The top two priorities continue to be mental health and at-risk youth. Critical needs fell from being ranked the third highest in 2019 to being ranked the fifth, while seniors and elderly went from being ranked fourth in 2019 to being ranked third. It is important to note that in both of these surveys, questions related to food and medication programs were not asked. Those are considered an automatic high priority and therefore are not included as part of the survey questions. The questions under the critical needs category are more in line with services related to substance abuse, legal services, services for abused and neglected children, and services for battered and abused spouses. When we broke down the 10 categories and looked at the individual questions, we found that some of the activities within a category were reflected very differently. Take, for example, housing-related needs. As a whole, it ranked low, but as you can see, rental assistance for tenants is an activity that jumped from being a medium priority to a high priority from 2019 to 2021. It actually saw a 20% increase. We feel this shift may be related to the pandemic and growing need for emergency rent assistance, as many have faced, have been faced with a job loss, reduction in income, and growing debt. As you can see from those who took the survey, nearly a fifth of those who took the survey were financially affected by COVID and/or have had trouble paying their rent. Another interesting piece of information is what dropped in priority from 2019 to 2021. Even though the survey reflects a drop in priority for security deposits, for example, the city has seen an increase in the number of security deposits that people have requested. It went from 80 in 2019 to 97 in 2020. Legal services are also an interesting one. During the focus group discussion with service providers on March 16, Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County shared that the organization has seen an increase in the need for legal assistance as a result of the pandemic. We hope this brief overview of the survey results are helpful and informative. Staff plans on conducting another survey post-pandemic to gather additional data that will allow us to capture more information that may be helpful in how we allocate future CDBG funding. So with that, let us get right into the capital funding portion, and then I'll move into the public service. All but one of the agencies that submitted an initial proposal followed through with applying, bringing the total number of applications from seven to six. In addition, when the applications were submitted, the actual allocation amount from HUD had not been released. So applicants asked for funding based on the estimate, not what the actual amount was that we received from HUD. And as I And as I mentioned earlier, we did receive a slight decrease in our allocation amount. Taking into consideration this change, staff recommends that all but two of the applicants receive the recommended allocations proposed by the city council back in October. For the two applicants set aside, staff recommends that additional funding be provided. These two projects are the Public Works Department's ADA Pedestrian Safety and Accessibility Improvement Project and the City of Santa Maria's Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. Here is why we're making these recommendations. During the October 6 city council meeting, the city council expressed an interest in providing additional funding to ADA public improvement projects if additional funding became available. And as far as the TBRA allocation is concerned, slightly increasing the amount of TBRA administration from the originally asked $10,000 amount to $15,000 will allow the city to financially recover additional expenses associated with this increasingly popular program. As I mentioned, we've seen an uptick in the number of applications that our division has received as far as Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. Now, we do receive, the TBRA program is funded by the home program, and it comes from the county. The county is the lead entity, and we're part of the consortium that, that receives the funding. However, because we're not a direct recipient of home funding, the county is, we don't receive any additional money for the administration of the program. The only money we're able to, the money that we receive, we're able to use for direct assistance, but we're not able to actually cover the administrative cost of managing and executing the program. That's where the CDBG funding comes in to pick up that amount. So moving on, here you can see a very colorful pie chart. The bulk of the capital funding, which is approximately 83%, is proposed to go towards three city projects. The ADA work meets the priority one, which is critical need, and the, and providing ADA compliance, and the public improvements, and it also falls under priority four, which is the public improvements priority. Approximately 9% of the capital funding is recommended to assist those experiencing homelessness, and about 8% of the capital funds will go towards the maintenance of affordable housing. This includes CAPSLO's Minor Home Repair Program, and that's a program that allows people to continue to live more comfortably in their homes by providing handyman services and structural repairs. It also includes funding for the administration of our TBRA program. So now, moving on to public services. Regarding public services, the Block Grants Advisory Committee focused on those programs and projects that prevent homelessness, address basic human necessities, meet critical emergency needs, assist the elderly, and expand services for at-risk youth. 12 of the 19 public service applicants are recommended for funding. Seven of those applicants, or 58%, will assist residents with critical need services such as food, medicine, legal services, and support services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. Two of those applicants, about 17%, will assist the elderly, and two others, 17%, will assist the homeless population. One agency, which is 8%, will assist the homeless youth. And here's a breakdown of, of the allocations that are being recommended by the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Now, they are ranked in, they are being displayed in order of ranking. So what the committee did was, during the second part of the deliberations, they did a Survey Monkey, and they all submitted their, the ranking, and then we gathered all that information, and then they, based on the cumulative, the collective results, that's how they started discussing the agencies and, and how they came up with the allocations. So, as I mentioned, 12 are being recommended for funding, seven are not being recommended for funding. You can see here on your screen the seven that are not being recommended for funding. It really came down to supply and demand, just more demand than there is supply. And with CDBG having a 15% public service cap, that only left $241,000, and then you subtract the $37,500 set aside for the committee, the committee only had a little over $200,000 to be able to allocate on that February 18 night. So here's what's next. Each council member has $7,500 to add to an existing public service grant allocation. The $7,500 can also be split between more than one agency or combined with another council member $7,500 to fund an organization not being recommended for funding to meet the $15,000 minimum. Please keep in mind the maximum for any agency is $24,000. At this time, we will open the discussion on the recommendations before you tonight for capital and public services funding. Once the discussion is complete and public comment is heard, we ask that council members make their specific allocations for the public services category and approve both the final recommendations for capital and public services funding. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I've got lots.
Oh, goodness.
Thank you, Ms. Rho. That was, oh, that was a great report. Before I forget, could I get a copy of the survey?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Okay, questions from the council? You want to start? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I, I know how difficult it can be with so many great organizations, not enough money. That's a huge task. So thank you for, thank you for everybody who was part of the process. Thank you for all the members of the committee. I think it's, it's tough. So, and I have been into that place as, for the district representing in the Human Services Commission, and we had something like this going on a couple of weeks ago. We're going to be presenting our, our thing at the end of this month. So one of my questions is, I would like to know why there was, why do we say no? Or what was not recommended to, was the criteria to not funding those seven, seven organizations?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Escobedo. That's a great question. So there's a variety of things that the committee takes into consideration when it decides who gets what and how much, and, and what the recommendations are going to go before the committee, I mean, before the city council. And so there's always a needs assessment that is conducted at the beginning of the funding process, and that usually takes place in August. And so that sets, and that comes to the city council, and the priorities are adopted for that fiscal year. And that kind of is definitely a big tool, because that is your barometer, your, your kind of template of what, what you're going to fund. So that's one way. Two, they review every single application, and I, I have a binder that will show you. So here are all the, and this isn't everything. You guys all used to get one, now we do things electronically. But, so they review every single application. Then we also do a staff analysis, and we provide that to them, and that goes more into the management side of it. So we, they also take into consideration, does the agency have the capacity to manage the funding? Does the agency, is, how has the agency done in the last several years as far as managing the funding? Are they submitting their reports on time? Are we having, because that's, that's a big thing, that's one of many requirements of HUD, is we also have to make sure that the agency receiving the funding is capable of managing the funds, because there's no such thing as free money, and CDBG is definitely not free money. It is a federal program, after all, and there's a lot of requirements, and, and so that's another thing they take into consideration. They also take into consideration, you know, can the agency still sustain itself without this funding? Is the agency trying to augment its, its, its services, or is, is the agency trying to stay afloat? Because that's another thing that we have to look into. So, and then also, of course, council's recommendations are taken into consideration, and then they conduct site visits. So after the, the applications are submitted, usually in December, then, and then we provide our analysis of the agencies, then they go out and conduct site visits and ask further questions. And it's almost kind of, why I always call it like a, like a first interview? So you submit your, your application, then you get, have, go through your first interview process, and then they actually go through another, like a second round of interviews, and they do the deliberations, and that's in a public fashion, and even more questions are asked of them. And then also, the agencies are able to clear up anything else. So by the time they're making these recommendations, they have had so much information about each agency, and then also the needs of the community, that they're able to make an assessment as to what the, what the biggest priorities are, as well as, and what the needs are, as well as what the capabilities are of these agencies to be able to manage the funding.
Thank you.
Sure.
Did you have questions? Ms. Waterfield, did you have any questions? Mr. Cordero?
I, I don't think a question, but a discussion on taking some observations, but I don't have any questions right now.
I have, I have a question on, on the legal, legal aid. What were the, because you said there were more legal assistance that was needed. What were some of the topics of, that increased that legal assistance?
The biggest thing is, I, I believe, the eviction moratorium was a big one. There were still quite a few landlords that, sorry, tenant, from what, from what I gathered, there's still a lot of misinformation and lack of information as far as tenant landlord rights, and what the eviction moratorium meant, and what it does and does not cover. So I, I think there was a lot of, there was a misconception, for example, that, you know, the eviction moratorium protects you no matter what, and that's not necessarily the case. The tenant also has to show that he or she is doing everything he or she can to make the rent, and there needs to be documentation. So there was a lot of education, more than anything. And then also on, they were also trying to educate landlords on what he or she could and couldn't do. So there was a lot of education.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We do have some written court communications that were received from Patricia Solario. She wrote requesting that the city council keep nonprofits at the top of the list when allocating funding. Brian Hollander submitted his comments on behalf of Independent Living Resources Center. Jennifer Smith wrote requesting approval of the proposed allocation for the Legal Foundation, and we have a few hands raised in our Zoom meeting. We'll start with Alexa Martin, if she's available to talk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to make a comment tonight. My name is Alexa Martin, and I am the Program Manager with the Independent Living Resource Center. For those of you who are not familiar with us, ILRC is the only cross-disability, peer-run organization in Santa Barbara County. We have been providing services to any person with any disability of all ages and income levels for the past 45 years. Our mission is to promote independent living and full access for people with disabilities through advocacy, education, and action in our communities. Benefits assistance, information and referral, advocacy, personal assistance, assisted technology, emergency preparedness, housing, and services and support specific to the deaf community are just a few of the many services we provide that enable our consumers to live more independent lives and continue as or become active members within their communities. Additionally, we have worked hard to ensure our consumers' needs were met as a result of this pandemic, including access to food, addressing the digital divide, and ensuring our consumers continue to have access to the services and supports they rely on. I want to thank you for your many years of support for ILRC. We understand that the Grant Committee has a very challenging job with many worthy applicants, and these decisions are not made lightly. While we did not make the cut for recommendation this year, we know this was not due to a lack of wanting to support our agency, but because there truly wasn't enough funding to go around, especially as a result of the pandemic. Local support is critical to ILRC's success and ability to continue providing services each year. It allows us to leverage funds for our state and federal grant matching support requirements and shows that the city of Santa Maria supports their residents with disabilities. Without funding, we may have to reduce staff hours, which would result in lengthy waitlists for consumers to receive services. I want to mention that we are careful, diligent stewards of these funds and ensure that all reporting and grant requirements are always met. I am here tonight to encourage the city council members to use your discretionary funds to support ILRC so we can continue the great work we do in Santa Maria community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker would be Sean Kellythorne, followed by Patricia Keeling.
Yes, my name is Sean Kellythorne. I live in Orchid, and I want to make some comments on this service block. I'm a senior living independently in Orchid, California, and I am a retired, 25-year Cal EMA hazmat outreach instructor and an active 15-year CERT member and instructor. In the last 12 months, has shown our social vulnerability and susceptibility to chaos rising from social unrest, weather anomalies, wildfires, and pandemics, and other things. The people who are most vulnerable to these events are our senior citizens and handicapped individuals. Supporting this public service project allocation would be a great service for these people. Any way that we can support independent living for these people would provide great value not only to these people, it would also provide benefits to all of our citizens and institutions by reducing negative impacts on other people who have to support these people. As a trained and experienced emergency responder, I recommend and urge the city of Santa Maria council members to support this much-needed action, and especially directed at seniors and that type of support. Thank you.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. I could not understand which one he was referring to.
I think he was talking about independent living.
ILR. What was it?
Independent.
Independent living.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Patricia Keeling, followed by Edwin Weaver.
Patricia Keeling, followed by Edwin Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Pat Keeling. I'm CEO for Communify, formerly the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County. Communify's Senior Nutrition Program is the longest-serving meal delivery program in the region, providing pre-daily meals to seniors. Currently, we're serving nearly 275 senior residents every day in Santa Maria alone. The average senior lives at or below the poverty line, is female, living alone, and over the age of 75. Since the pandemic began, demand for home-delivered meals has more than doubled. Community meal sites in Santa Maria have been closed since the pandemic began, so all of our meals are now being delivered directly to seniors' homes, following strict safety protocol, utilization of PPE, and no face-to-face contact with seniors. Now, more than ever, providing those hot nutritious meals to our seniors on a daily basis is critical to helping to keep our seniors safe, independent, and healthy at home. In addition to daily meals, we also provide frozen meals for weekends to those seniors who are homebound, as well as provide nutrition education to help seniors make healthier food choices. We are also in the process of planning to implement friendship calls using volunteers to reduce their sense of isolation that so many of our seniors are experiencing during this prolonged pandemic. Of course, delivering all meals individually to seniors at home has meant that our costs have increased significantly. We've hired more delivery drivers and secured additional vehicles, brought on volunteers, all of which has increased our gas and, and maintenance expenses. In addition, rising food costs have resulted in a 25% increase in our cost per meal. These challenges, however, have not deterred us from our mission of feeding seniors. In fact, we've added over 100 new Santa Maria senior residents to our- to our program since January 1st, and we continue to add new seniors every week. I truly appreciate all of the hard work that your staff and the CDVG Grant Committee has committed to this year's grant review process. Unfortunately, as you know, we were not recommended for funding this year. In the past, Communify has been able to absorb the increasing gap in funding that this program requires. I think I've mentioned in previous city council meetings that we must fundraise approximately 55% to 60% of the funds needed to operate this program every year. But moving into the future, we will no longer be able to do this. We face some very difficult decisions ahead. Now more than ever, we are asking for your support to ensure our seniors continue to receive hot nutritious meals to be healthy and remain safe at home. Thank you so much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Weaver, followed by Kirsten Calhoun.
Thank you very much. This is Edwin Weaver. I'm the Executive Director of Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for tonight's deliberations. I'm here to talk to you about our homeless outreach program that we've started over the last two years that specifically targets homeless teenagers and young adults, so anyone 16 to 24 years old. We partnered with the city for Project Safe Place, which has been successful up until COVID, and then we had to pause it for a little bit. But we also have done successful street outreach to our transitional age youth, and we're able to house 75% of those that we came in contact with over the year last year. And so we're really proud of the work that we've been doing. This has all been supported through the heat funds that we were awarded, but those funds run out at the end of June. And so we're really hoping that tonight that you will increase the allocation from $15,000 up to $20,000, which is what we budgeted for this fiscal year. Now, there's a lot of other great organizations that also need funds, but we do believe that our homeless young adults are most vulnerable, and we are the only group out there working with this population. And so we really could use your CDVG funds this year. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Kirsten Calhoun, followed by Lauren Utterback. Lauren?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for having me. My name is Lauren Utterback, and I am the Emergency Preparedness Services Manager at the Independent Living Resource Center. I greatly appreciate the council and the city of Santa Maria for the opportunity to speak with you today and the ongoing support that you have provided to ILRC. In our Santa Maria office, we have provided PPE to consumers, personalized disaster and emergency planning, nutrition services coordination, and I personally have provided 1,410 services to people with disabilities in Santa Maria since August of 2020. We have also provided all of the things that my program manager, Alexa Martin, has mentioned, such as assistive technology, which could be walkers or wheelchairs for those who are extremely low-income who we serve. We provide advocacy, housing application assistance, employment assistance, COVID-19-related assistance, transportation, and in-language support. We have delivered 173 bags of PPE to Meals on Wheels Santa Maria clients and their volunteers. ILRC has provided Santa Maria residents with disabilities with assistance with COVID vaccine appointment scheduling, transportation to COVID vaccine appointments for people with wheelchairs and mobility disabilities so that they can arrive and leave their appointments safely when no one else could transport them. We have also provided transportation for COVID-positive people with disabilities from the hospital to their home when no one else could drive them so that they would be able to return to their home safely. Some of the individuals I serve have asked me to share their success stories and comments about ILRC and the services that we've provided for them. One such anonymous consumer said, "I'd like to thank you very much for the PPE and backup battery the ILRC provided for me and my family. You and your awesome Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program has provided me with much-needed peace of mind during precarious times. For that, I'm very humbled and grateful. Thank you." Prior to contacting ILRC, I was genuinely concerned about what I would do if the power ever went out at my home. However, it wasn't until recently that it was announced that there were going to be scheduled rolling blackouts and that my concerns significantly escalated. I've been a CPAP user since 2010 after suffering viral congestive heart failure. My life literally relies upon its use while I sleep. I began researching options and priced various systems, but ultimately couldn't afford them or concluded they weren't feasible for my home. The backup battery, also a power inverter that ILRC provided me, allows me to power my CPAP. It can also charge important electronics that I would need during a disaster or an emergency. I've incorporated my new backup battery into my family's disaster preparedness planning, and I feel confident we would persevere through most short-term events. U.S. Air Force with a service-connected disability and also medically-retired law enforcement officer of more than 30 years. I live on a monthly fixed income, which makes large purchases difficult. The ILRC has restored a previously lost sense of security to my daily living. I'm genuinely humbled. Lauren's patience, compassion, and smooth facilitation through the entire process has been a godsend. I'm forever grateful and thankful. One of my other consumers is someone who spoke previously, Sean Kellythorne, who also received a backup battery from us for one of his electronic durable medical equipment needs.
Thank you, Ms. Utterback. Your time is up. We'll have to go on to another speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Calhoun, we'll try you again, followed by Stephen Delara.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is Kirsten Calhoun, Director of Homeless Services for the Good Samaritan Shelter. I just wanted to first thank and acknowledge the CDVG Block Grants Committee volunteers who had such a tough job this year and every year, but just do an incredible process in making sure that all of the nonprofits are heard and that the process is fair. And we just really, as a nonprofit, appreciate everything that they do. We also just want to thank the city council and everyone involved for their continued support of Good Samaritan Shelter. We continue to serve the most vulnerable homeless in our community. We are amongst some incredible nonprofits asking for funding, and we know that we can't do the work that we do without our partner agencies that are listed and we're asking for funding this evening. So we are extremely grateful to be a part of the team that helps the vulnerable in our community. And we are hoping that you accept the recommendations. Good Sam can't do the work that we do without the support from the city of Santa Maria. This past year has been very tough trying to keep the homeless safe with the pandemic and continuing all of our services, but Good Sam has not skipped a beat. We never closed our doors. We never stopped serving. We added programs and continued to serve the clients that needed us most, even under strict public health guidelines and having to serve less clients. Tonight, there's over 100 clients in our Good Samaritan Shelter on Morrison. Amongst those are veterans, there are children, there are seniors, and just truly the most vulnerable in our community. So thank you for your continued support, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you. Stephen Delara, and while he doesn't have a hand up, Brian Hollander has been previously. So Stephen, go ahead and talk if you're ready.
Thank you, as I unmute. Good evening. I'm Steve Delara, Deputy Executive Director for Family Service Agency in Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center. I'd first like to thank the city and city council members for their continued support of our agency. As an update, the new lighting and the trash enclosures have been completed, and I come to you tonight requesting funding. Last year, Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center did not receive funding for the Safe Child Program, and this year, we are recommended for full funding by our visiting CDVG Grant Committee members. However, we did not make the final cut, and as a result, we are not recommended for funding this year. As a result of the global pandemic, when the governor issued a stay-at-home order within 24 hours of the closure of schools and businesses, Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center switched over to the telehealth and telecommunication model and continued providing services to people in Santa Maria. Our agency worked closely with community-based organizations, public and private sector, philanthropic groups, community members to meet the needs of the youth and families in Santa Maria. The collective impact was amazing. We worked with Latinx Indigenous workgroups to provide education services to the Latinx and Indigenous community. The Housing for the Harvest Program worked to address people with COVID-like symptoms, those that had positive COVID tests, those that were exposed with people that had COVID. We worked to educate and assist in quarantining and isolating families to help stop the spread of COVID-19 in Santa Maria. In this collaborative effort, Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center worked with Marion Medical Center, the Ag Commissioner's Office, the Ag Advisory Committee, MYCOP, CAS, Promatores, Farm Laborers Group, Public Health Department, and the Department of Social Services. In addition, family service agencies worked with United Way to provide rental assistance by distributing checks to Santa Marians. The collective approach has been amazing and very humbling. It is true that we are stronger together. In light of everyone's effort, however, the playing field is far from equitable for the youth and families served in Santa Maria. Adverse childhood experiences is trauma, trauma that has been experienced by children. These traumas include emotional, sexual, and substance abuse, domestic violence, homelessness, mental illness, divorce, physical and emotional neglect, poverty, discrimination, and poor housing. The pandemic has increased these adverse childhood experiences. I will submit that when the children return to school, they will not be returning the same way they left. In fact, none of us will be the same after experiencing this pandemic. We are requesting $20,000, in which we would be able to provide 67 clients with a total of 33 counseling sessions. If two or more will come together, we could reach the 20,000. If two of you are willing to come together, we could reach the 15,000 and serve a total of 50 unduplicated individuals for a total of 249 counseling sessions. The state program provides trauma-informed crisis counseling that is culturally and linguistically appropriate. The program serves youth and families struggling with mental health issues, living in poverty, and in at-risk homelessness. Now more than ever, the youth and families of Santa Maria need your support to help mitigate and address the impact of the pandemic. We know there will be a demand for counseling as our children return to school and our residents return to work. Thank you for your consideration of our request.
Thank you. Brian Hollander, followed by our final speaker, Nicole Janikowski.
My name is Brian Hollander, and I'm a program manager with Independent Living Resource Center. I'd like to begin by thanking the city council and the city of Santa Maria, as well as the Grant Making Committee, for your many years of ongoing support that you've provided to ILRC. ILRC is the only cross-disability nonprofit organization serving the citizens of Santa Maria. As you've heard from my colleagues, we provide a wide array of services to people with disabilities in Santa Maria, as well as throughout the tri-county region. The need for our services has only increased in the wake of the unprecedented challenges that we currently face. For example, in Santa Maria, the number of consumers we've served year over year increased from approximately 41 in 2018 and 2019 to approximately 90 in 2019 and 2020. That doesn't include what we've served from August of 2020 to the current time. The number of distinct services provided, which our services have provided to a single individual, also increased during that period from approximately 200 in 2018, 2019, to approximately 320 in 2019 and 2020. In the past year, we've had 40 requests for assistive technology equipment or assistance, 20 requests for personal assistance services, 36 requests for advocacy services, 278 requests for assistance with housing, which can include assistance with avoiding evictions or tenant protections. We've also had 478 requests for other independent living skills trainings in Santa Maria alone. These are just a few of the areas of service requests that we've received and filled during this period. And the support we've received from you has allowed us to fulfill these requests by maintaining our two full-time staff members and our office in Santa Maria. We appreciate the chance to share with you some of the impact that we've had together on the Santa Maria community, as well as appreciating any funding consideration that we receive. I'd like to once again thank the council and the committee, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. I don't see Ms. Janikowski's hand up any longer. Okay, there we go.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Nicole Janikowski. I work for the Independent Living Resource Center. I'm the independent living advocate. I want to take a few minutes to share about the services we provide and how much of an impact ILRC has made for the community. I will start off by sharing our core services we provide. In the Santa Maria office, I have assisted consumers with their housing needs, provided assistive technology equipment, PPE, independent living skills, such as employment readiness and money management, advocacy, peer support, benefits assistance, and assisting consumers with setting up vaccine appointments. The people with disabilities are the most affected by the pandemic, and we have been bridging the gap to ensure they have access to the services and supports they need and been addressing the digital divide by making sure our consumers have access to computers. I want to take a few minutes to highlight, I mean, a minute or so, to highlight a couple of the supports I have provided in Santa Maria residents. I have been working with a consumer who was unable to leave her home due to mobility issues and lack of assistive technology. We were able to provide her with a power wheelchair, which allowed her to leave her home and begin participating in her community again. This individual has also been impacted by the digital divide due to the pandemic, and we were able to provide her with a Chromebook to aid in her housing search, allow her to access services and support more efficiently, and to connect with her family and friends. She later expressed to me how thankful she was for ILRC and how blessed she feels to be able to go to the grocery store and to go outside to get some fresh air with her new power chair. A second consumer I would like to share about, heard about us through our commercial airing on local channels. His wife passed away in January due to the coronavirus, and he said that he felt hopeless, lonely, and afraid because he can no longer afford his rent. I provided him with peer support and worked with him to navigate the various barriers he was facing as a result of her death. My consumer has since expressed how much more at ease he feels and now has a sense of hope. He called me just to tell me that I motivated him to start packing his wife's stuff, and that has been just sitting around as he was depressed. We later applied for COVID rental assistance to allow him to stay in his home while we figured out a long-term housing solution. Many of our staff at ILRC have disabilities, which allows us to provide our consumers with the compassion and understanding that they deserve. The support of the city of Santa Maria is crucial in allowing us to continue providing these important services. I encourage you to use any funds available to support the great work that Independent Living Resource Center does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that was our last speaker, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I would like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for the consideration of staff's recommendation and determination of our allocation of $37,500. So let's begin with public service.
Is it just the motion?
I guess I will go. We're just discussing, right? Is it what we're talking about?
Sure.
My gosh. This is probably one of the hardest decisions that we make as a council, because we look at
Oh, yes, of course.
We look at, you know, all of these great organizations that need our money and depend on our money, and you throw COVID on top of everything, and on our money, and you, you throw COVID on top of everything, and everybody's affected. The children, the elderly, the in-between, everybody is just so affected by all of this. And it's really hard to choose, and I, I'm down to three.
Okay, now, are you, are you talking about the public service?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, right? The public service recommendation allocations? Is that what we're talking about?
Adopt, adopting the recommendations that CDBG already put in place. Not so much what our allocation is.
No, we're not talking about ours right now. We're talking about public service right now.
Oh, oh, are we, are we wanting a motion? Is that what we're wanting, or? And then discussion?
If you want to.
The thought was, and as Ms. Rojo presented it, was, as a foundation, if you were okay with the recommended allocations of public service, then you can adopt a motion to reflect that, or, or whatever you would like. And that's then a basis and a foundation for you then to make your additional allocations of your 7500 each.
Okay, so in that, in this motion, we have four parts to it. And so I can, I can go ahead, and it does have the 37,5 in there, so I can go ahead and make that motion.
Yeah, at this point, if you leave the 37,5 out, then we would be able to see which ones aren't funded, and then the council can deliberate which other ones should be funded.
Okay, so...
And also, sorry, and also, if, if some of the ones are already funded, those can be modified in this second part of it. Okay.
Okay, so then, I'm looking at the recommendation, and we leave item number three out for right Because that's to allocate, to allocate $37,000 to public service programs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my motion is that city council approve a motion with these three items. One, conduct a public hearing to review comments from the public, we've done that. Consider the block grant advisory committee's BGAC recommendation for the allocation of the fiscal year 2021 to 22, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, Public Services Funds, and consider staff's recommendation for the allocation of fiscal year 2021 to 22, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Capital Funds.
Well, we're, we're talking about public service.
Yeah.
Okay, leave out the capital, leave out the last one.
Leave out the capital, and leave out the 37,000.
Just to make it easy, you remove the staff's recommendation of the public service portion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
I make that motion.
Second, okay. We have a, a motion and a second to take the recommendation of the public service of the CDBG Grants Committee. Any discussion?
This, yes. This doesn't prevent, by accepting this, this doesn't prevent someone from saying, "I want to add to..."
Correct.
...X.
Right.
Okay, all right, I wanted to make sure that...
It's, 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 we're not turning things around and switching around, we're just taking that.
Okay, I, I, I get it.
Okay, you got it, okay. Further discussion? None? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield. Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Okay, now we're going to take the capital projects.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation or CDBG committee's recommendation on the capital projects.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the, the recommendation from CDBG on the capital projects. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
Another fighting starts.
No. Well, Ms. Escobedo, congratulations. It's, it's been a long time since a newcomer onto the city council hasn't tried to switch things around, right, Ms. Rojo? Okay, now, our allocations. So, how do you want to do this? You've got $7,500.
Okay, I started with my allocation of the item number 10, 15, or 16. Those are the three that I've...
Which one?
10, 15, or 16.
I would like to put my 7,500 with ILRC, which is Grant 15.
15.
15.
Mine, I would like to choose the 18. Should it be like different, or just 18? Nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Or 10?
I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what you, you're trying to split up?
Oh, no, it was like...
You're trying to decide between them?
Yes. So, but if I have to choose, would I have to be choosing one?
You choose, choose one.
Okay, okay.
But, but just to clarify, it needs to be, that grant, he needs to receive a minimum of 15,000.
Yeah.
Correct. So in that case, I, what I, after what I saw in the presentation, and, and I, I see that there is a big concern in regards to housing. And I think it's a, it, it went from medium to high priority, so I would like to invite one of my fellow city council members to, to allocate the $7,7,500, and together found people's self-help housing. That's number 18.
Go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, as all of the other council members, am leaning with two. One, number 10, and the other is number 16. I was here, of course, as you were, last year, and number 16, Steve didn't get funded at all, and then ended up getting some funds later on, and then there was, extra funds came in, as I recall, and then he got funded for the Family Care Center.
Last year, they were not recommended for public service funding, no.
Yeah. So, so...
Yeah, it was capital.
I, I am, I'm strongly considering Communify and the Senior Nutrition Program, and my reason is, you just got to feed people. And these are certainly two groups, number 10 and number 16 are two of our, our most vulnerable demographic in any community. One is the, the senior citizens, and of course, the young children. So I've got no problem with, with partnering with anyone on those two, but somebody mentioned Communify earlier.
Thank you.
I, I would choose to put my money in Communify with, with Ms. Waterfield, and that gives them the 15,000. Is that correct?
It, it does, and so I have a decision to make.
I know, because I'm like, are you putting it on?
I know, but, no, and, and that, that was my, my number, that was my number one, was, was the number 10, and then the 15, and the, and the 16, and then the 15.
Oh, 16 then 15?
Yeah, it was 16 then 15, but I, I agree with you, the seniors are very vulnerable, Mr. Cordero, and...
And, and I, I'm familiar with this organization in that not only is it the food that they get, that visit that they get from the person may also be the only other human contact that they exchange, that they get, even if it's from the front yard to the distance...
Absolutely.
...to, to their front door. So, so there, it's, it's more than just somebody laying some food there. And I want to say again that two years ago, I had a person that I knew, the, the husband has now passed on. I called Communify, then it was, of course, CDBG, I mean...
CAC.
Yeah.
CAC.
CAC. And I called him, and I said, "Hey, I got a problem here with somebody that just got in touch with me, and, and they're not getting any food." And the next day, this organization had food at their door. So I, I'm, I'm all about supporting them, and, and I, I wish we had more money. I guess it's time to give my Mayor Lavignino speech, and that is that this is one of the hardest things that we do, and there's, there's always so many worthy organizations, and there's never enough money to go around. And you're all to be, you must go home and cry.
It's hard, because these all are great, great agents, and they provide a great service.
And it's so hard to say, "You're going to eat and you're not." But I, I will allocate my, my 75 to Communify along with Ms. Waterfield and fund them. That would...
Okay.
If she does, if she commits.
You got, what did you do?
ILRC, Independent Living Resource Center?
Number 15.
Okay.
Yeah, number 15, and...
I need an additional 7,500.
Okay, and I'm going to do number 13, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, because they have been taking youth out of the riverbed that are completely homeless. Is that 16? No, that's 13.
13.
13.
Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley.
13.
13.
They, they already have 20,000.
No, they don't, they have 15.
Oh, 15, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Carlos, what were you looking at?
So my number, my number one, it's 18.
Okay, so, and you can't do 75 by itself. So I'm thinking that maybe, since we have two really good, number, number 10 and number 15, would you consider, would you consider doing number, number 15 with Ms. Soto? And I, I will do my Communify Senior Nutrition with Mr. Cordero.
I'll take a minute, too. Yeah, what?
You will?
Yeah, no, I, I would like to...
Oh, take a minute to this side, okay.
Yeah, take a minute to, yeah, have an inside conversation.
Have an inside conversation? I do that all the time.
He's processing this.
Question would also be if Ms. Soto would be willing to, to also go on the, the other way around and support our farm workers' household program.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo, for your question. At this moment in time, given the need, and given the fact that we only, we have such limited resources for individuals living with other abilities or disabilities, and, and seeing how, how the vulnerability within that particular population, it just, it's really concerning to me that there is, there is currently limited support for, for, for residents who are, who are living with, with disabilities or other abilities. And I think that that was evident with the number of public comments that we got in support of the Independent Living Resource Center. And at this moment in time, from my understanding of people's self-help housing, is that they will be able to continue with the, the work with that, our $15,000.
So that's, you know, I'm aware that everybody who is now receiving this fund will be able to keep going, right? That was one of the criteria?
It is something that's, that's taken into consideration. However, CDBG funding is not, has never been meant to sustain an agency, it's been meant to augment an agency. So it provides the ability for an agency to increase the level of service, not to keep them in business. Does that make sense? So yes, it's taken into consideration, but at the same time, we also are advised by HUD to also not provide funding to an agency that is not going to be able to sustain themselves if CDBG funding isn't provided. So there's a little bit that's taken into consideration.
So they're all going to be able to keep providing this service?
They'll...
Pretty likely.
They'll all be able to provide their service. At what level, I'm not sure, because obviously, these dollars augment the amount of service that they're able to provide.
Let me offer you this. If, if you're, you know, if you would like to do the Communify, the Senior Nutrition with Mr. Cordero, that would be fine, and then I could do the other part with Ms. Soto Or you could add to one that's already getting funded.
And, and actually, I would like to see the, the chapter where it says the person, how much goes to, to the different, yeah, that one.
And if I may just add that someone who helps care for someone with special needs, this is a really important project for us to fund.
So one of the things I, I see in this, the chapter, and kind of like, I think that's, there's this priorities, and I think that we are destining a good amount of the critical need portion of it. And we get a little bit, you know, homeless and, and elderly, there's this, it's pretty similar. So, but I don't see a special needs, I, I see that's the only one that has the, that really target or serve, I would say, that population, so I'd be willing to, to move and destine my $7,500 for independent living resources.
He's putting his 7,500 with ILRC, which is number 15.
No, I'm going with Mike, and Carlos is going with Gloria.
So we will be having two more organizations, the Communify and the Independent Living Resource. Awesome.
And then, Madam Mayor's going with Fighting Back Santa Maria.
She's on.
And Councilor Waterfield and Ms. Soto are going with 10.
Communify.
Communify.
And then, Councilmember Soto and Councilmember Escobedo is the number 15.
Yeah.
Do I have to read that into record?
Just as a motion.
Well, yeah, a big motion. Okay. If it, if it pleases the council, I'd like to make a motion for the allocation of the Madam Mayor is going to add her $7,500 to Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, the Homeless Traditional Youth Services, number 13. Councilmembers Cordero and Waterfield will pull their money together and support Communify Senior Nutrition, item number 10, and Councilmembers Soto and Escobedo will pull their money together for item number 15, Independent Living Resource Center, services and outreach to the individuals with disability.
Any further discussion? Are you, have you had enough discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Okay, the next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the city council is April 20th, and we have the opportunity for the council to award the bid for the North Blosser Road Diet, making that road more pedestrian-bike friendly, and we are planning to bring forward a public hearing for the user fees. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Oral reports of council members. Mr. Escobedo, can we start with you? Mr. Escobedo, can we start with you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to share that last April the 2nd, I attended the grand opening of the Aquesta Apache Park. Really nice. It was a great ceremony, and the facilities are really cool. I actually brought my, one of my nieces with me. They were excited about it. They live pretty close by, so when I told them that that was going on, they were really excited. They went crazy. Actually, I have to. When I came back, she didn't want to. She was like, "Carlos, let's say a little bit." So, okay, we'll say. And also last, it was April 1st, I was invited to the migrant academy virtual presentation day. It was, it's a group of different students from the Santa Maria School District, high school students. And they invited me to be one of the guest speakers and talk a little bit about who I am, and where I come from, and what we do here at the city council meetings. Good questions, and it was a really good experience. So thank you for the invitation. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waterfield.
Madam Mayor, I do not have any comments from my weekly reports, but I do, I did get an email from Sister Janet. She wants to send her greetings and prayers and loving support to everybody here. Thank you, Sister Janet.
Thank you. Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 17th, I attended the airport district meeting. On March 19th, I attended a planning meeting for the April Elected Leaders Forum on Homelessness for the County of Santa Barbara. On March 26th, I met with the mobile, a group of mobile car wash business owners. On April, on March 31st, I met with a group at the Public Defender's Office that is focused on racial justice. And so they have like a racial justice committee for the public, the Santa Barbara County Public Defender's Office. And on April 1st, I attended migrant education's annual academy, which was a virtual presentation day, which I believe Mr. Escobedo was also a part of. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 18th of last month, I had a board meeting associated with United Way. And we're now having meetings every Monday, getting ready for the Queen Contest. On the 31st, I attended a Zoom meeting for sustainable energy for the Central Coast. And that was interesting, to say the least. It's in association with the power group that we signed up with here. Was it last year, or the year before that? On the 29th, I was at the police department for some promotional swear-ins. And it was kind of nice to know that we were kind of getting back into the groove of things. And it was a pleasure to see a couple of people get promoted. One, Phil Dix, promoted sergeant there. I had a little bit to do with his hiring, and he's a great asset to the department and doing quite well. And then yesterday, I attended the pinwheel planting thing with you. And that has great meaning for me, because as I said earlier, my wife and I have been affiliated with the North County Rape Crisis Center for well over 30 years. And it was great. And once again, I had that feeling that we're getting back into things. And the North County Rape Crisis Child Protection Center was certainly out there to let us know more about their needs and their accomplishments. That would be it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. March 17th, I'm going to say, attended the State Council on Developmental Disabilities statewide self-advocacy chats. On the 18th, I did the county legislative briefing. On March 24th, I did the California Cities Homelessness Roundtable webinar, and did the California Cities Mayors and Council Members Roundtable Discussion, and Marion Regional Medical Center Healthcare Roundtable with Sue Anderson and Chuck Merrill. On the 25th, I did the American Rescue Plan, which is focused on homelessness, eviction, and poverty webinar. Was a panelist on the Future Business Leaders of America and How to Be a Community Leader forum. On March 31st, did the California Channel Counties Division Meeting with our Congressman Carvajal. On April 1st, did the Riverside County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force Steering Committee meeting, and also Exploring New Housing Laws and Ordinances webinar. And did the Santa Barbara County Legislative Briefing, met with three gentlemen from the Mobile Car Wash. And on April 2nd, did the grand opening of Aquesta Apache Park, which was absolutely phenomenal. We saved $700,000 by doing that park in-house, and I think we should do it in-house all the time. We have such great talent. Roy Tenente, Rick Garcia, Jose Paz, and Scott Christian. I just can't say enough about the park. And yesterday, did the pinwheel planting for the child abuse awareness. And this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show. Any other comments from the dais?
You know, if anybody deserves their own park in town to have it named after them, it would certainly be Bobby Aquesta. He was a great guy, and I neglected to mention that. I was there for that, too.
Yeah, he, very active in the community, and he was a rotarian with me. But Elks Rodeo Parade, Junior Grand Marshal in 1961, and just very active, giving back to his community all the time. And his wife and family and grandchildren were there to pull back the curtain on the memorial rock for him. So it was very nice, very nicely done. Yes, he was.
He, I was assigned various responsibilities with the parade over the many years. And there were times when we had to get together, and he would be riding with me, and people would stop us. And they would ask him questions about the rodeo. And I almost wanted to say this the other day at the park, but he was so informed that he would, he had the answers for these people. They just needed some support, and he was so informed. And he, it was real calm and easy for him. He just, "Yeah, you just go over there and do this, and look in drawer number four, and your answer's right there." And he was just a really a pleasure to work with and deal with. I certainly learned a lot from him on how the inner workings of the parade take place.
He had a great sense of humor. And whoever you were with him at any time, it was, there was also humor included in that. Well, I want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you at the dais. We got through a very difficult decision-making night, but it was great. This meeting is adjourned.
You, you, you're acting me up.